Okay, good morning. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agencies Advisor. I thought I had. Sorry, I mustn't just turn myself off. Okay, one more time. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agencies Advisory Planning Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. It is nine thirty-five. And the first item on our agenda is the roll call to determine our quorum. So I'll go over to Tracy.
Mr. Oling.
Present.
Mr. Kuchnicki. Mr. Kuchnicki, your microphone appears to be off.
I'm present.
Ms. Lander?
I'm here, thank you.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Drew?
Good morning.
Mr. Ferry?
Present.
Ms. Ferris? Ms. Setza?
Present.
Mr. Lessin?
Morning, present.
Ms. Marolas O'Neil?
Present.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Present.
Ms. Simon?
Present.
Ms. Stoller?
Here.
Mr. Steven?
Here.
Mr. Tashero?
Good morning.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Okay, I'll go over the remote meeting rules for the day. To observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting. Hybrid meeting for November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate agenda item. With your hand raised, you'll be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and you'll be unmuted. To APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You will find the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box chat box to make any comments or have sidebar conversations. Please, everyone, remember to mute your microphone unless speaking to cut down on background noise. And finally, I'd like to ask all remote members to turn on their cameras if they are able. Thank you for doing that. Okay, on to item two, approval of the agenda. Staff, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. I will deem the agenda approved as it was posted for the record. And I'm gonna move us to item three. This is public interest comments.
Before, before you move that, I can't see the AV stream of the room very well. Is it?
Look a little dark.
It's a little dark, yeah. I can barely make you out, and that's only because I know you.
What's the technical issue with the camera?
It's a technical issue, right? Well, hopefully, hopefully, we can get that resolved.
Yeah, I. When it, yeah, when it zooms out, it's, it is a little dark. I agree. Sorry about that. Sounds like that's what we've got to work with today. Okay. So I'm gonna move us on to public interest comments. This is item three on our agenda. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission at this time, please either come to the podium or raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. All public comments should be as brief and concise as possible. I do have the discretion to set appropriate time allotments for that. We're looking for three minutes for individuals. We did, I'll just say, receive a significant number of public comments on our agenda item later in the meeting, and we have reviewed those. Remember, this is for items not on our agenda. Late comments may be distributed and posted after the meeting. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in the subject of your email. Please note, the Advisory Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public not listed on the agenda. And I will go to the room first for public comment. I see we have one here, so go ahead.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. It's been a long time since I've been before this commission. Happy to see some familiar faces still. The last time I believe I was here is two thousand seventeen, when the Placer County Tahoe Basin Area Plan was approved. With the understanding that the two thousand twelve regional plan update had TRPA and a regional role. I'll fast forward. I've been to several meetings of Placer County, Douglas County, TTD, Tahoe Transportation District. I always try to remind people about acronyms. And even the governing board and other committees, I've been totally dumbfounded at how off course, in my opinion, the agencies have run amok on decorum and process. I'm gonna use the fifty-four minute webinar recently posted where I believe the public participation was stunted. It just wasn't an uncomfortable meeting, and I'm hoping that the public will get more respect. Totally other subject for council. Good morning, John. Barton Hospital Demo, the hole in the ground there. The area plan is not updated, the Douglas County area plan, to allow the hospital to come forward without that zoning change. I know that there is an area plan, I think, in the works and an EIR. I'm just saying, it looks like work has gone forward before. I think it should have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Other public comments in the room? Come forward, thank you.
Hi, my name's John Messina. I've lived here a long time. And I agree with the previous speaker. These meetings are like secret society. Nobody in town knows they're happening. Nobody gets to put input into them, and you guys make decisions that are not in the best interests of the city.
Thank you for your comment. I'll just note agendas are posted the week in advance on the TRPA website, and that has happened for many, many, many years. Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other public comments in the room? Okay, I'm gonna go online. Catherine, any comments online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are three hands raised so far. The first hand up was Ann Nichols, and if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good morning. Yeah, I'm hoping that this webinar is not gonna be like the recent ones. There seems to be a new method of public participation as far as the agencies are concerned. The last webinar on the subject, you know, the people speaking were edited and they weren't available to see what they were, you know, their questions online with the other people. So it was very, no one could really learn from everyone else. And as far as, you know, the noticing for these meetings, this is really significant. This, these are major changes to our housing amendments, and Placer County is going at the same time. We, in fact, we just had a meeting where public comment wasn't allowed at a meeting, which I believe is a Brown Act problem. And there was eighteen pages of new information submitted, you know, so. And then at that governance committee meeting at TRPA with John Hester and Cindy Gustafson were saying, well, maybe we need to limit public participation if we've heard what they have to say before, which is awkward because a lot of the same people are on all these different committees. So, you know, but then there's new people. So then the public feels like they have to make their point. You can see how complicated this is getting, and everything is a little bit different, but it's all about housing. So thank you very much. I hope you will make this meeting really transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
The next hand raised is Tim D. Tim, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hello, thank you very much. Yes, my name's Tim Delaney, and I grew up in Incline Village. And anyways, Ann Nichols is spot on about a lot of this stuff. I feel the way these meetings are being conducted, it's a horrible strong-arm tactic against old money and local people that own property all around the Tahoe Basin. You know, it's just overwhelming to deal with. It's just every single day we're being worked over and pressured into accepting all these code changes and new development in our regions, you know? So, you know, the thing is, is low, middle, high-income Native Americans, Reno Sparks, the extreme athletic community all around the Tahoe Basin. There's no way extreme athletic individuals are gonna approve of all this. You know, we're the type of folks that were one with nature, okay? And building gigantic buildings, sixty-five-foot-tall buildings in our community and shoving more people into our community, it's just wholly unacceptable.
Tim, let me stop you there. This is public interest comments for items not on our agenda. We'll be talking about the housing amendments and a few agenda items.
Okay, well, aside from that, yeah, I feel, I feel overwhelmed the way the meetings are being conducted. I mean, I just look at this, you know, it's a pressure tactic, and I feel a lot of times I'm cut out of public comment and stuff. And, you know, all these slideshows are going down, and it's all these, this buzzword action and everything. And we're just being steamrolled, and it's highly inappropriate. And I look at it, you know, for you folks at TRPA, you know, I held jobs too. And, you know, it's tough, you're, when you're a young man and you have a child and, you know, a mouth to feed. And sometimes in life, you know, when you have a job, you have to speak up. You know, some jobs I just gave up, and I just wouldn't do. So the thing is, is I just gotta wonder about folks at TRPA, mind, body, and spirit here. You know, it just seems that, that folks are not very, you know, there's something wrong when you, when you're using these type of tactics against an older community here, and we're being overwhelmed with all these meetings and everything. It's ridiculous. I don't wanna waste my life going to meetings defending my property interests. It's absurd, and it's vile, and it needs to stop. Anyways, thank you very much for hearing me this go round. You take it easy.
Thank you, Tim.
There are two more hands raised. Next hand up is Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I just wanna know which one of you today will have the leadership to speak up for the most wonderful Tahoe Basin and its clean waters and clean air and public safety. Rather than rubber stamping the TRPA's self-preservation process that has been in place since the two thousand twelve regional plan. Please ask hard questions, and please don't continue to rubber stamp TRPA's leadership ideology of overcapacity and degradation of the lake and public safety. I think we're coming to, I think, well, we're past the tipping point here at the lake. I don't think any of you are envisioning at what point do we stop this? You can keep saying there's growth limits, but TRPA always finds a way around these things, like what will be your phase three housing amendments. So just, I just hope, hope you ask the hard question, where is this all going to stop? At what point can this, even though it's a huge, wonderful lake, it's a very small capacity basin? And you guys continue to rubber stamp leadership's ideology of overcapacity? And I'm just wondering why you're not thinking for yourselves? You know, you have a very important role, and you can make a big difference, but who within your group is gonna supply the leadership to get this done? You're gonna go along to get along? You know, I think it's time that we start thinking about a change in leadership at the TRPA. When you add up all the cumulative impacts and all the negatives since the two thousand twelve regional plan, it's been a failure. You may not think so, but sooner or later, it's gonna be demonstrated somewhere that's gonna make a difference that your process, your self-preservation process at the TRPA is not working group. We're not a bunch of nimbies out here. We're reasonable people. We love our homes. This is about our homes. This is not about destination. It's about public safety. It's about adhering to the laws and regulations of the State of California, Nevada, and the federal laws. Your counsel can manipulate it all he or she wants, but I ask you to use your own brains. Think about this and ask some questions, please. This information submitted is substantive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Next hand up is Kathy Julian. Kathy, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, thank you. Just on this issue of process, I appreciate that the agendas are posted. And I also appreciate that you have actually a very good website that talks about a lot of issues. But I don't think people know about these agendas listed, posted, and I don't think they know about the website. So I think TRPA needs to do a much better job of outreach to inform the citizens of the basin on what is going on and the decisions that are being made. And I'm especially interested in having more transparency on these advisory working groups like the Tahoe Living Housing Council. I have in front of me a list of everybody who's on it. But I think if you were to do a survey of people in the Tahoe Basin on knowledge of TRPA and what it is, and knowledge of these advisory groups that you oftentimes draw from the realtors, the developers, the not-for-profit community, few environmental groups, they would draw a blank and absolutely be clueless. And that's a problem because all of these groups are contributing to decisions that affect our lives. And the lack of voice that people are feeling in the basin is palpable. And, and it's, it really, this is what TRPA, one of the things you need to address. One, one simple thing you could do when you have these webinars, why is it that we cannot see who else in our community is attending? If we were doing this in person, we could see, oh, he's over there, she's here, he's saying that, he's asking this. But we, in these webinars, it's this black box, and it's like you're isolated. This is not community. So when you do these things online, let's see who is online. As an example, we're on this Zoom meeting. How many participants are on Zoom? Who are they on Zoom? Can we have something where we see the list of participants? This makes a community, and it helps us connect with one another in the community on issues that matter to us. And if you're not acknowledging that, it, I'm afraid it suggests to me you don't want us talking to each other about these issues. And that would not be good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
There are two more hands raised. The next hand is Alexis Aller. Alexis, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good morning. TRPA Advisory Planning Commission, my name is Alexis Aller. I'm the Executive Director of Mountain Area Preservation. We are a thirty-six-year-old environmental advocacy organization focused on Truckee, Tahoe. And I wanna bring just two items to the APC attention. I know today mostly you're gonna hear about phase two housing amendments and the concerns with the fast-paced process, along with a number of other outstanding concerns. I wanna talk about process, and I wanna talk about regional growth because I think it's very important for the APC to consider these items, especially as you go through the hearing today. The process that has come forward with these housing amendments is absolutely egregious.
One second. Remember, this, we're not talking about the housing amendments yet. This is public interest comments, so please keep your comments for non-agenda items right now.
Yes, but I'm tying this to the Placer County TBAP process, and I think it's important for the ABC to understand how convoluted and confusing this process has been when Placer County also put forward their economic amendments that also included housing. And so I think it's important for this commission to understand that it has been woven together. Your planners, your TRPA staff has admitted that it has been a confusing and inappropriate process to many of us as stakeholders who have said, this doesn't make sense. There's charts and data out, out of, I mean, there's things that are just not even updated on the TRPA website, and we're being asked to follow along. So when you hear about process concerns, I hope you all are listening today because it has not been transparent, and it is not building community trust in TRPA nor Placer County for, for those of us on the North Lake shore. Additionally, regional growth is something that we seem to not even be considering. The landscape is nowhere near the same as it was in two thousand twelve, when the regional plan update was approved. We have the town of Truckee, who has put forward a twenty-year general plan with the hopes of having a fifty-thousand-person population. You've got Reno, Sparks, Carson City, all of these communities are planning major growth, and we're not even taking that into consideration with this and how it's impacted the regional plan update. So please, today, think about what happens outside the basin and think about what happens inside the basin because Tahoe is not isolated. We are not a bubble, and we deserve better than one-size-fits-all planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
The last hand raised is Pamela Sigdenos. Pamela, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time to read all the comments that were submitted. And I also want to set a real understanding of the importance of what you'll be discussing and deciding over the course of the day. I was really taken, and I felt very powerfully moved back in August at the Lake Tahoe Summit when one of the leaders of the Tahoe Basin stood up. His name was Harry Fillmore, and he was with the Washoe Tribe, and he reminded everybody who was there about the destruction and degradation of the Tahoe Basin over generations. He talked about the fact that the land was dug up, that the waters are no longer clean. To quote him directly, he said, "They're sick. Today, our land is no longer good. We owe it to ourselves and to future generations to make sure that anything that we do in the Tahoe Basin honors the land, takes care of the environment, the wildlife habitat." I just cannot underscore enough the powerful words that we heard and the importance of setting that as a high bar for today's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
Thanks, Catherine. I see Hope Sullivan's hand is up. She's a panelist. Can you help me with that, Catherine or Tracy?
She's an alternate for Ms. Ferris.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Sullivan, I'm gonna have you just lower your hand right now since we're at public comment. Thank you. Okay, thank you all for your comments. I'm gonna move us on to item four, which is disposition of minutes from our last meeting. We do have a draft set of minutes from October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three on page five of our packets, and I'd love to entertain questions, comments from my fellow APC members on the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Steve Pichera. So there's another great job, Tracy. Good level of detail. There's a number of references starting on page eight to Kim Carringer. That should be Chevalier. And there's also on page twenty-four, a reference to counsel, which should be C-O-U-N-S-E-L. Those are the ones I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. I do understand that Kim may be sticking with.
She'll go back to her.
She asked you to? All right, very good.
The process of changing one's name apparently is very difficult.
It is very difficult.
Oh, you're.
Miss Chevalier asked that her maiden name be used.
Very good.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments on the minutes? I don't see any hands raised online. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Happy to make the motion to approve the minutes with the one change on page twenty-four.
Thank you, Steve. Second. Thank you, Garth. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions or objections?
Yes, this is Jason Kitchnicki. I'd like to abstain.
Thank you, Jason.
I would also like to abstain. I wasn't on that one.
Hope Sullivan, I'd like to abstain.
Thank you, Hope. So we have Jason, Emily, and Hope abstaining. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Thank you, Tracy, for typing those up for us. Okay, I'm gonna move us on to the meat of our agenda now. This is item five, our public hearing. Item five A is Phase Two Housing Amendments, including proposed changes to Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen, Area Plans, Chapter thirty-six, Design Standards, Chapter thirty-seven, Height, Chapter thirty-one, Density, Chapter thirty, Land Coverage, Chapter thirty-four, Parking Policies, Chapter fifty-two, Bonus Unit Incentive Program, and Chapter ninety, Definitions, along with changes to the Goals and Policies, Land Use, and Housing Sections that would only apply to projects applying for deed-restricted bonus units. Information on this item can be found on page twenty-seven of your packets. And I'm happy to pass this over to Alyssa Bettenger with TRPA to present.
Actually, I'm just gonna kick it off really quickly with a quick background before we turn it over to Alyssa. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the APC, Karen Fink, Principal Planner, TRPA. I just wanna talk a little bit about how these amendments fit into the work of the Tahoe Living Working Group and TRPA's Tahoe Living Strategic Priority. This is Phase Two of three phases of work that we've been bringing forward with the Tahoe Living Working Group, and that working group is an APC committee, which is chaired by the APC Chair, Mr. Ferry. And so what you're seeing today is the, kind of the work of that group coming to fruition in this phase. And the purpose of the Tahoe Living Strategic Priority is to look at TRPA's role in addressing the shortage of affordable and workforce housing, and how through that effort, we can also, at the same time, achieve the environmental and sustainability goals that are called out in the regional plan. So having sufficient affordable and workforce housing in places that are walkable and close to transit and existing stormwater infrastructure that is very tied to meeting environmental goals and environmental gain. When we first introduced this phase to the Tahoe Living Working Group in October, staff initially proposed just focusing on density. What we heard from the working group and then later from the governing board was that we should look at density, height, coverage, and parking together because when builders are coming forward trying to build these affordable and workforce housing projects, all of those development standards kind of work together as a package. You can't just look at one. Also, the governing board wanted us to take this opportunity to do some analysis to understand what is the kind of full range of changes that would actually be needed to our development standards to actually allow workforce housing to be built without a public subsidy to, they wanted that analysis to inform the decision-making. So we have included as many of those recommendations as possible into this proposal. But in order to keep this phase moving, staff committed early on to keeping the scope to within that level that could be analyzed under an initial environmental checklist. So as you're going to see in the presentation, the scope is very narrow. It's focused only on the remaining bonus units, which we have already analyzed and already planned would be distributed throughout the existing bonus unit boundary. That's the area where we have our town centers, multifamily zones, and our walkable, close-to-transit and services. And then the changes also don't go beyond what can be mitigated through our existing regional. So all of these changes need to use existing findings or existing programs like our existing coverage and transfer program. We haven't changed those. And so we do believe that these amendments are critical for reducing the costs to provide affordable and workforce housing for both the private market and for publicly. and workforce housing for both the private market and for publicly subsidized projects. With that, I'll turn it over to Alyssa.
Thank you, Karen. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the APC. Thanks for having us this morning. My name's Alyssa Bettenger. I'm a senior planner with TRPA, and I'm here to present the Phase 2 amendments with a request for a motion to recommend approval of the amendments and the findings to the governing board. Next slide, please. The amendments that you will see today focus on addressing the affordability crisis that we're facing here in Tahoe today. Over the past few decades, the cost per unit of housing has skyrocketed. We need more housing units at an affordable price. And smaller units are inherently more affordable, like the photo that you see on the left versus the photo on the right. The proposed changes that you'll see today to development standards help us get there. Next slide, please. But this isn't just about housing. As Karen mentioned, environmental gain and affordable housing are linked when built, when affordable housing is built as compact development near and around our town centers. This development allows people to actually walk or bike to the places that they have to go, which reduces our VMT. Compact development is also more likely to use less coverage on a per-unit basis and also more likely to be able to tie into our stormwater treatment systems that we have in and around our town centers. And last, compact development along our corridors provides the density that our transit needs to work. So while this proposal was developed with housing in mind, it really does meet a lot of our other regional plan goals. Next slide, please. As Karen mentioned, we kicked off our Tahoe Living Strategic Priority back in 2020 with changes to accessory dwelling units and incentives to convert old motels to residential. We're now in Phase 2 of the Tahoe Living Initiative. Again, this is focused on development standards. And we are planning to kick off Phase 3, which will look at some larger changes to our growth management systems or our development rates, looking at how we can make our policies more equitable, looking at fees and permitting as well. Next slide, please. Just to give a bit of context before we get, or before I get into the proposal, I want to note that development is capped by the 1987 and 2012 regional plans. We are not proposing any changes or any new growth to these caps. The number that you see on this slide here, 946, that is the number of bonus units that remain in the TRPA or the TRPA pools. Bonus units we give, TRPA gives out to projects that are building deed-restricted housing. And I'll get into what that means in the next few slides. But just regardless of whether these amendments are approved, these 946 bonus units can be built today. So there is no change to the amount of development that can be built under the proposed amendments. Next slide. We are hoping to accelerate the use of bonus units in and near our town centers with these proposed changes. And we can do that through our development standards. And when we talk about development standards, we mean coverage, height, and density, which are set typically at the regional level and also through local area plans. And then we, TRPA defers parking and setbacks to the locals to set. And development standards influence what gets built on the ground. If you, if you can, it's a little bit small, but you can see here the area in pink on this graphic is lost square footage due to parking requirements on the ground floor. So a significant portion has to go to parking in the garage. And then on the top floor, a lot of living space is lost due to roof pitch requirements. So when you're building a single-family home, you can work with this building envelope. When you start to add in more than one unit, so duplex, triplex, fourplex, the units become so small that they become financially infeasible to build. And so that is, you know, contributing to the large, single-family homes that we see today that are going into generally our second home and VHR market. Next slide, please. And so the last couple of years, we have been working with a third-party consultant to look at our development standards and how we could make changes to make housing more affordable. And we've been asking questions like, if we were to allow higher density, for example, how does that influence the cost to build and the affordability of the resulting units? And we found that by making changes to not just density, but all of our development standards could reduce costs or could reduce rents by nearly 40, by nearly 40%. So this goes to show that making changes to these standards can produce units at a cheaper cost without the huge subsidies that are required today. Next slide. So using the analysis that was done by our consultant as a baseline, we've also done quite a bit of outreach and gotten a lot of community input on the proposal. And it has evolved throughout the past couple of years. We've especially done a lot of outreach in the last six months. I want to note, you know, this, I know that this is a little bit small on the slide, but these are some of the groups that we've met with and the outreach events that we have attended or held. And I do want to note that, you know, there are a lot of opinions on this proposal. Some think that we should go further, some think that we have gone too far. We feel like that this proposal that we're bringing forward today is a middle ground that aligns with not only our housing goals, but our other regional plan goals. Next slide. The proposal that you'll see today only applies to deed-restricted bonus units. So again, TRPA has the 946 bonus units that we can give out to projects that are deed restricting the units for housing. And we have three deed restriction levels. The affordable and moderate categories are income-based. So households need to meet or have a, they have an income requirement that they have to be within. The third level is achievable. There is no income limit associated with the achievable level. It is really targeted at our local workforce. And so the requirement is that at least one person within the household works at least 30 hours per week within the Tahoe Basin. Next slide, please. So the proposal varies depending on location. So there's two areas where the proposal would apply, and I'm gonna go through the location and then what would apply there. And I'll ask for clarifications when we get there. So the first location is town centers. When we drew the town center boundaries, they, they were usually around the existing commercial. But what is lacking in a lot of these areas is the residential to support that commercial and also to support our transit. And so in these town center areas, we really want to encourage higher-density housing that supports our shops, our restaurants, as well as our transit. Next slide, please. And these are the town centers for the South Shore. Next slide. So within these areas, we are proposing to allow an additional nine feet of height. We, this would allow up to 65 feet up from 56 that we allow currently. I do want to note that there are a number of required findings that have to be made when any additional height is proposed. We are also requiring that any height above 56 feet be stepped back, one foot for every one additional foot of height, which will essentially create, you know, more steep roof pitch. We're proposing to allow coverage over 70%. Right now, we allow up to 70% in our town centers. This would require the project to treat, treat their runoff, their stormwater runoff, excuse me, through area-wide treatments. And these are available right now only in the State Line area, the Harrison Avenue area, and the Tahoe City area. So it is limited with where these areas, these existing stormwater systems, where they could be or where this additional coverage could be implemented. Our hope is that over time, more area wides are built and there are more opportunities to tie into these area wides. But at, our existing systems are limited to those three areas. The proposal would remove density maximums, which would allow more units to fit within the building instead of requiring developers to build larger units. Density at the parcel scale is really limited by other factors, including lot size, building coverage, and height. And so by limiting the amount of density, we are incentivizing or forcing larger units to be built. So this proposal would remove density maximums. And then the last change is to parking. Local jurisdictions currently require between one to two spaces per unit. This proposal would allow a developer to go lower than what is currently required from the jurisdictions. But the developer would need to provide a parking analysis that shows the parking demand and how that demand is being met either with parking or they could potentially provide a shared parking agreement with an adjacent landowner, saying that they're not going to build more parking, they're just going to better utilize what already exists. That's an example of what we would accept. We have gotten a lot of feedback on parking. I just want to note, again, some folks want more, some folks want less. This was the direction that we received at RPIC, so we'd love to hear the thoughts of the APC. And then I just want to pause for any clarifications on this slide before we move on.
Thanks, Alyssa. Any clarifications so far, APC members?
One, Alyssa, did you say that additional height above 65 feet would be, did I hear that right? That it would be required to be stepped back?
Any height above 56 feet, which is what we currently allow.
Thanks. That's what I was hoping I heard.
And then just to clarify, I know this is what you said. I just want to make sure I heard it right. So for the additional coverage, those would only be allowed to go through regional BNP systems, not onsite treatment. And there's only three of those right now.
Correct. There's only three existing area wides that are active. We have a number of other area wides that are either in the planning process or are constructed, but they're not technically active to where they're, you know, they're ready to have projects tie into them.
Okay, thank you.
Alyssa, have you reached out to Public Works just to determine what the capacity? I know at least two of the systems are city-run and city-owned. What the, what the capacity of those systems are?
Yeah, we have, we have some documentation for when they were built of the capacity estimates. When a project would come through, if they wanted to have or build to higher coverage, they would need to work with the Public Works Department and the local jurisdictions to make sure that there is capacity. So there's, yeah, another limiting factor there.
I'd like to add to that, Mr. Chairman, John Hester. John, what we plan to do, once these amendments are through the process, is convene a working group of the Public Works Directors. We have money in the budget to actually create some construction specs and criteria that all of us agree to that would meet the needs.
More question. Just for clarification, so the amendments would be specific just to the remaining bonus units? That's in order to stay under the cap and for the RIM analysis process?
Correct.
So just to play that out a little, because I know there's concern about that. If and when a development proposal is submitted, staff will evaluate and ensure that the units, that the residential units of use that are provided to that development do come out of the existing 946 bonus unit pool. That's already been allocated and can be developed currently, even today, right? Could be developed anywhere in the basin. Well, in the bonus, within the bonus unit boundaries or within town centers. Did I say that right?
Yeah, within the bonus unit boundary.
Within the bonus unit boundary, okay, which includes centers.
Which includes centers, yeah. And there are, we do have, we further break down that 946 into specific pools. There are bonus units allocated to each jurisdiction, and then TRPA sets aside a pretty large pool that's just available on a first-come, first-served basis. But those bonus units do need to go into the bonus unit boundary, which includes centers and all areas that are zoned for multifamily.
Okay, that's good clarification. I think, I hope everyone heard that. There's an insurance process for these bonus units, which are already allocated to be used. I see Mr. Kutchnicki's hand up online. Jason, would you like to go?
Yeah, I was just wondering, could you repeat where the three existing area-wide, active area-wide projects are? Or facilities?
Yeah, the State Line area near, like Heavenly Village and the casinos, Harrison Ave area, and then the Tahoe City Town Center. And we do have a map. I have a couple snippets of the map that I can have Tracy pull up. Yeah, we do have a map. It's an interactive map on our website if anyone in the audience is interested, and then we can also pull it up on the slides.
Okay, while you're working on that, Hitch?
Yeah, I believe the city has one other system, which is the Bijou. You know, the Bijou Commercial Center.
Right, so that is showing as, let's see, yeah, that's, yep. Kind of hard to see on here, but it's the areas in blue. So it's Harrison Ave and Bijou. I was kind of combining those two, but they are different. And then Tracy, you could flip to the next slide. So there's a small portion of Tahoe City that does have an active area-wide.
Okay, thank you for showing us those. I see my, my, let's see, we have two more hands on our panel here. How about Ms. Stoller, and then we'll go to Ms. Setzer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly that in a center, a development could only take advantage of these additional coverage allowances if they could contribute their stormwater flow to an existing area-wide treatment and that existing area-wide stormwater treatment facility had capacity to treat that stormwater.
Correct. I guess the one caveat with that is that the developer could, you know, work with the Public Works Department to build a new area-wide system. That process is lengthy and, you know, it requires a lot of public-private partnership. So I guess that is, you know, the alternative option.
Okay, thank you.
Emily?
Thank you. Yes, I'm seeing that Lake Forest and Carnelian Bay in my district shows as constructed on the map, and I was wondering what is the difference between constructed and active, or what does it take to become active?
Yeah, so constructed means that it is, the area-wide has been built, but it is not, it's, it's not registered essentially, so it's not ready to, it's not registered with our, with our TMDL system. So it is sort of in the final construction process.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Ms. Simon? You're muted.
Muted. Sorry. Can you just clarify what the, the, I, I think I was following the 946 bonus units that remain. But did you use a term on bonus pools? And can you back up and kind of straighten me out on what exactly that means?
No, I can, I can clear. Yeah, we do have another hidden slide. Yeah, this one. Yeah, so we, during the community plan processing, or community plan process phase a while back, we did allocate a number of bonus units to each jurisdiction that you can see here. So each jurisdiction does have their own set of bonus unit pools that's included in the 946. And then in addition, TRPA has quite a few bonus units in our pools that we can distribute to projects as well. So that breakdown is shown here.
But they're all within that 946?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Any final thoughts here? I don't see any other hands raised. We're not taking public comment yet. That will come a little bit later. Thank you. Uh, okay, Alyssa, you ready to charge on?
Yep. Okay, so the other area uh that we are proposing changes to are within our areas that are already zoned for multifamily. So the town centers on this map are shown in darker orange and the areas that are already zoned for multifamily are shown in the lighter orange. Um, the next slide will show what we have proposed in these areas, and this is the same map for the North Shore. Next slide. So within these areas, we are proposing to allow additional uh additional flexibility with roof pitch. So we're um, right now, we allow uh between thirty-six feet to forty-two feet in our multifamily areas. Depending on the slope and the roof, the proposed roof pitch of the building. So we um. Are, you know, instead of requiring a uh. Uh, steep roof pitch like this, I'm going to use my arms as a diagram. Um, we're uh, we're proposing to allow the building to be built with a shallower roof pitch, but go up to the same amount of height. Um, and if that's, if people have questions about that, I I do have another slide that has a kind of a diagram of what that looks like. We allow um up to thirty percent land coverage, depending on land capability in these areas. We would be allowing um additional land coverage up to seventy percent. This option would allow uh projects to tie into those area-wide stormwater treatments like we were just talking about. Or they could do um onsite BMPs if the local jurisdictions take responsibility for. Monitoring and managing um and ensuring that those BMPs are managed over time. Um, and so there, to our knowledge, there is not a process that the locals, that the local jurisdictions have. Set up for that right now, so that would be a requirement in order uh to actually get this additional coverage. I'm sorry, could I just jump in? We actually do allow up to fifty percent coverage in community plan areas. So there is a higher coverage than thirty in some. Thank you.
Sorry, you're saying that exists now?
Correct.
Okay.
The third change would be again exempting deed restricted units from density requirements. Again, to encourage smaller sized units, um, density a- again is um. Limited by the building envelope as well as the lot size. Um, so we want to encourage developers to build smaller units that are more affordable and density is a way to get there. Um, and then similar to the parking proposal in the town centers, um, we are allowing projects. To go below what the, the local jurisdiction requirements are today. Um, no less than point seven five parking spaces per unit on average. Um, and again, in order to deviate from what is currently required by the local jurisdictions down to that point seven five. The builder would need to show um an analysis with the demand and how they are meeting that demand. Um, and again, this was a recommendation from our pick. Next slide, please. In order to create a transition between the town center locations and the multifamily areas. The proposal includes um an additional height allowance for parcels adjacent and contiguous to town centers. This would be an additional eleven feet of height. Um, again, I know these, the slides are a little difficult to see, but it is the parcels that are in pink. Um, and these are within the multifamily area. So this is um again, sort of to create. A uh transition um in height. This is just a good planning practice. Next slide, please.
Quick question on that additional height. Is that, does that include, is that only for the roof pitch change that you mentioned?
That is um, that's separate from the roof pitch change, so they can have uh. Eleven feet over what is allowed right now in chapter thirty-seven in that table.
Okay.
Just eleven additional feet.
Okay.
And they would be, you know, that additional height would be subject to the same findings. Um, the same step back requirement, so any height above what is currently allowed in that in table. Uh, in the table in chapter thirty-seven would have to be stepped back, stepped back.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide. And these are the same areas for the North Shore. Next slide. So the proposal um would apply to ADUs and mixed use, and I just want to go quickly through how, how. Um, we want to encourage walkable development um with ground floor commercial. And residential above, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community that they, that they want to see that. And so um. The, this proposal could be applied to mixed-use developments that are building. Um, ground floor commercial with a hundred percent deed restricted residential above. Um, the commercial portion uh would be required to be no more than fifty percent of the total square footage. Um, so there is a limit there. And then for ADUs, um, the additional coverage incentives that were included in the proposal would apply to ADUs. Both in town centers and areas zoned for multifamily. And there are side size limits. Um, up to twelve hundred square feet or seventy percent depending on, uh, seventy percent. Coverage depending on where the, the property is located. Next slide.
Can we talk just for one second about mixed use?
Yeah.
On this slide, because it's, I think it's come up in a lot of the public comments. Um, I know TRPA is working on a mixed-use definition, but it looks like. You are proposing something specific here, which the way I'm reading it, hundred percent of the units are deed restricted affordable. Um, and no more than fifty percent of the total square footage of the mixed-use building can be commercial. So fifty percent at least has to be the housing component. Is that, is that correct?
Yep. So if it was like a two-story building, for example, the commercial portion could be the ground floor and then um. The second story would need to be residential.
So we're not talking about one unit in a large building qualifying, something like that, right?
Yeah, the, that provision is meant to exclude that, that situation.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Next slide. Again, the proposal has continued to evolve based on input uh since the APC packet was posted. Um, I just wanted to point out some of the deviations um since when the packet came out. So the first is uh with shade requirements. In the packet, we mentioned that, or in the staff report, we mentioned that. Shade would be addressed at the project level. We have uh included a shade or a provision in the. Proposed code language that's going to our pick next week. That shade would be addressed through a shade analysis um in the code. So it is, you know, it would still be addressed at the project level, but we have added code language um to ensure that that happens. Uh, we have also in, made a change to coverage and parking based on some of the comments we've received. Um, if, if uh any of the coverage incentives that. Are, were highlighted in this presentation are applied to a project, then the project would not be able to go over. The uh parking minimums that are required by the local jurisdictions right now. So they again require between one and two spaces per unit. The project wouldn't be able to exceed that. Uh, that number of parking spaces if they are um using the coverage incentives in this proposal. And then, yeah.
Sorry, wrong one. That's also to address that the issue of whether or not you can use the additional allowed coverage. For building versus parking. So what this is saying, if you're going to want to go seek that additional coverage, you need to use it for the building. Uh, for the units rather than to provide additional coverage over the minimums.
And then last is the transition zones. Um, those have not changed since your packet came out, but. Um, I did just want to highlight that that is a relatively new change. Next slide. So TRPA has, has historically delegated height and density standards to locals when they are uh developing area plans. Um, I want to note here that uh because of the need for affordable housing. The changes that are proposed today would supersede the standards in the local area plans. Um, we are providing a opt-out option for the local jurisdictions. They would have to go through an area plan amendment process. In order to set their own height and density standards. Um, and we would require that any reductions to height and density. Um, or parking changes would be supplemented by other strategies that would reduce the cost of deed restricted housing. So whether that is a direct subsidy or other programs. Um, we would look at that when the area plan amendment, or when the area plan comes through the amendment process. Um, and we would be looking for some sort of analysis, whether that's pro forma analysis, similar to what we did for this process. Um, looking to make sure that uh the alternative standards, you know, provide the same amount of affordability. As what we are proposing here. Next slide, please. We are planning to go to our pick next week for a request for possible action. We did complete an IEC um for the environmental analysis that we posted on October eleventh. Um, this IEC has not been revised uh since we posted it last month. Um, we are planning to make a round of revisions that will be included um in the IEC that goes to governing board. In their packet next month. Um, and again, that governing board, that governing board meeting, um, we will be, they will be considering it. For rec, or for approval. Um, and in the IEC, there will be a summary of what was changed. So we are trying to make it very clear about. Um, you know, the comments that we received and how the document was changed based on those. Next slide, please. And with that, I will pass it back to Mr. Chair uh for any questions.
Thank you, Alyssa. Good job. Okay, um, onto APC for questions, comments. We've already, we've already done quite a few. I do, why don't we go online first this time? I see some hands raised already. Um, Mr. Young, I'm going to go to you first.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate the uh presentation as usual. Well done. Um, I do regret the uh. What seems to be maybe some misinformation or some kind of a disconnect between. How we are able to communicate the importance of housing and in particular workforce housing. And lower income housing to um. Uh, the environmental quality of the basin. I, I guess at some point along the way, we just haven't made that connection as well as we, we need to. Um, I know that it's in every presentation at least a little bit. I know that um. Um, the idea that we have a, a, a maximum amount of development uh is. Is well-known, um, but doesn't seem to be communicated quite well enough, so. Um, I regret some of the, of what we're hearing, um, because I um. Uh, because I understand the value of these amendments and the, and the value not only to. Bringing some workforce housing and some increased lower income housing, but how that in turn. Really helps us accomplish some of our other missions. And so I hope that we can continue to work away on better communicating that. So with that said, I'd like to go to um a couple of questions that I have. Um, I'm very interested in what the rest of the APC members will think about the fifty-fifty mixed use. That we stopped and talked about just a moment ago. Um, it, it, it's, it's clear that we need a rule like that, or else we would get, you know, the one unit. In a, in a big warehouse, um, trying to take advantage of these rules. So we don't want to, we don't want to do that. But I do tend to question the fifty-fifty split, and I wonder if that is really the right spot in order to incentivize this. Um, I think somewhere above um fifty percent commercial. Would be more incentivizing to have people do this. Somewhere around, even if it were just fifty-five percent. I, I, I've, um. I, I'm curious to hear what others think, but I think that I'm going a little bit past fifty. On the amount of commercial that is allowed is probably advisable. In order to really kick in the incentive aspect of getting property owners to do this. Um, so fifty-five, sixty percent, I think, would be more useful, but that's um just my thought. I'm curious on your thoughts. The other question that I actually have is on how these new rules will supersede the area plans. I appreciate that. I think it's useful um to say that and to do it that way. But it leaves me with the question of whether um the local jurisdictions with area plans. Will be um required to come back and amend those area plans to reflect these amendments. Or will this superseding concept um uh just perpetuate? Um, are you going to be asking us to? Update our own plans into an area plan update process to reflect these amendments? So th- those are my questions and my comments, and I really appreciate um you letting me chime in today. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Eric. Do you, you don't, maybe you don't have to address the going over fifty percent. But do you want to talk a little bit more about the area plan amendment process and the superseding? Mr. Marshall?
Sure. Let's step back a couple of uh ways, just kind of make this a little more uh not so technical and legal jargon-y. But if you remember, the whole concept of area plans was the TRPA would set basic standards, minimum standards. And then uh in area plans, local jurisdictions could deviate from those standards. Uh, assuming they could make all appropriate findings in chapter thirteen and, and make all environmental findings that we have to make. Um, so that kind of as a way of allowing local planning to uh be kind of folded into the regional plan. Um, and so that's kind of an opt-in. Model. So local jurisdictions could deviate if they opted into the area plan concept and approved it. What this model is, is basically an opt-out model where the uh, under our authority, TRPA. Uh, authority, we're saying these will apply to local jurisdictions. Um, notwithstanding the fact that the area plans, uh which are part of our regional plan. Uh, are contradictory, but these will be establishing the minimums necessary uh for all jurisdictions to use. Uh, bonus units. And kind of that principle is based on uh our authority, in particular under article six A. Of the compact, which says, you know, we make the general rules and that any political subdivision or public agency may adopt. And enforce an equal or higher requirement applicable to the same subject of regulation within the territory. So what the key analysis here is, what are these changes? Uh, you know, ba- basically, TRPA views them as setting a floor. Um, and if you want to deviate from that floor. Uh, you need to do that through an area plan that establishes that your, the local jurisdictions changes. Are at least as effective uh as the floor, the minimum that TRPA is setting. Let's take in just one example. Should I keep going or are we kind of beat this one?
No, I think this is important.
Um, so height, right? A lot of a- area plans have uh height that. Uh, probably differ from TRPA's proposed, uh what's being proposed now for town centers and. Um, areas outside, uh multifamily areas outside of town centers. Now, TRPA is enacting these, and I think we talked about this a little earlier, to promote environmental. Um, as well as uh housing objectives. I mean, the housing objectives really implement, implement. Uh, environmental considerations. So we're establishing those as the minimums necessary. And you can deviate from those from height. Um, for example, if you come in with an area plan that shows you're meeting the minimum uh of these basic considerations. Uh, so what that means is that from our perspective, local jurisdictions are preempted. From imposing more, uh lower height requirements until they come in with. from imposing more, lower height requirements until they come in with an area plan that says, that justifies why they want to go low in terms of height in those areas. I can answer any questions, but that's the basic structure of what we're talking about.
I think that makes sense. Can I, Hitch, can I just ask one clarifying? So just to ask about a real world example, because I know folks are concerned about this. So just process wise, this is here now. It's going to ARPC and then governing board, I think in December, and then goes into effect something like 30 or 60 days after.
60 days.
60 days after. So say February, something like that, if, if this is all approved, just to make a story. So say in March, someone has a magical proposal in my jurisdiction that wants to take advantage of this. But we haven't obviously amended our area plan yet, but these rules now do supersede our rules. So there may be a little window. Say we wanted to change our rules, but we didn't have the time to do that. Could, how, how would we handle something like that? Would we, would it be upon us to conduct the analysis and approve that project? Or could we say, hold that project off to change our rules? To try to change that project? Because I'm just, I don't think that, I don't think anyone's going to be ready that quickly, but I know there's concerns about this. So I just want to put it out there.
So our rules would be effective 60 days after adoption. So whenever the governing board, assuming they approve the package as is, whenever that happens, 60 days later, it goes into effect. So those, those sections that are inconsistent with any other area plan provisions will control until the local jurisdiction adopts an area plan amendment and TRPA approves it that meets the same basic housing, you know, promotion requirements. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. I mean, that's the clear answer. Hitch, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification that we actually had to go through the area plan process. So for areas outside centers, which the multifamily zone, we would actually have to go through an area plan, planning process and adopt area plan for those multifamily zones that want to adopt, I guess, more stringent standards, less height.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yes, correct. So if you don't have an area plan for an area, you would need, and you, and you don't want these standards to apply, then you would need to adopt an area plan to show that, that your provisions are at least as effective in terms of providing deed restricted housing.
Yeah, because we're at least two years old on doing area plans for our residential zones. Thanks.
Right, that's a good point. Other clarifying questions on this?
I, I, I do. This Eric Young.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. One, i- i- you may remember that when Washoe County adopted its area plan, we included the entire portion of Washoe County in the Tahoe Basin and not just a individual portions of it. We included all of it. One of the advantages of doing that, one of the reasons we wanted to do that was to get as far away from two sets of codes and two sets of rules as possible, because we had lived for many, many years under trying to explain to customers whose rules applied when. And one of the big achievements that we had in the adoption of our area plan was to really get, get down the road quite a bit towards relieving that problem and towards having one set of rules. So of course, everybody needs to be cognizant of both, both sets of ordinances, right? That's still important. But we, one of the things we have really benefited from over the last few years since the adoption of the area plan is much better customer relations and customer engagement with how the rules work, because there aren't so many different places that you have to look. So I understand this opt out process and concept, and I appreciate it. I'm not against it, but I am going to ask for some kind of help in our customer engagement and helping them know that this is available, that it does supersede our rules. I don't know whether we're talking about a flyer or, or I, I don't know what we need from you, but we're going to need something to help us with that issue. Because we made significant progress on it lately. And now this is, this is a little bit of a step backwards, just in terms of process. Thank you.
Two things I would respond with first is it certainly would encourage, you know, to, to encourage the local jurisdictions to make those, if they wanted to deviate from those standards to adopt an area plan that would do so. But we've also, you know, this is a kind of in an inverted way, an issue that we've run into before on the California side regarding ADUs. And so I know Placer County, for example, and I think El Dorado County. And I'm not sure about what's happening right now in the city, but we have, through our local government coordinator, worked with local governments that feel they can no longer issue permits for ADUs, the TRPA side of permits for ADUs. So there's a whole education effort that's gone underway to alert people coming in for ADUs as to what the process would be, because there's a different state process and in those, for those delegated activities. So that can be an example, Eric, that we can help you with.
Thanks, Mr. Marshall. Thanks, Eric. Okay, a few other APC members, hands are up. I'm going to go to Ms. Simon and then Ms. Chandler.
Yeah, thank you. I did, most of the questions I had about the codes have been answered. Thank you, Eric and John. But I also wondered if we could have kind of an example. I got lost in the issue of coverage versus parking. Whether, you know, you, if you had more coverage, you could have less parking or something like that. Can staff clarify what that proposal is?
Yeah, so the coverage proposal allows a project to come in and, and use the amount of parking that is required, you know, the minimum amount of parking that is required by the local jurisdictions. They couldn't use that additional coverage that we are offering for more parking than the minimum that the locals require. Does that clarify?
Can you, well, not really. Can you give like a real world example of how that might work?
Yeah, so say someone is building four units and the local jurisdiction currently requires one unit per house, one parking space per housing unit. The developer could build or, you know, would need to build four parking spaces, but they couldn't build more than four and receive the additional coverage.
Okay, so they have, have the coverage.
So the additional coverage, Judy, needs to go to the housing and not the parking lot.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, it's not even the additional coverage. If they are prov- providing more parking than the parking minimums of the local jurisdiction, we would not give them any of the additional coverage incentive. They'd have to comply with the old coverage limits. So once they go over that minimum, they don't qualify for the incentive anymore.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for that additional clarification. Okay, good. Ms. Chandler?
Yeah, hi, how you doing? So first of all, I do want to commend the work on this project. The Tahoe Living Working Group has done an outstanding job and gotten great backgrounds. I do have some concerns though. And my first concern is the amount of misinformation about this plan that is out there in the community. And I feel that maybe if by moving forward too quickly with approval or pushing it on to the governing board, that will get more comments about how there's a lack of transparency, how we're supporting something that's going to lead to environmental degradation. So I really would like to see the misinformation responded to and perhaps some things clarified. And I don't know how you would go about doing that or what that new timeline would look at. But I really feel that the community is not really aware of where the development is going to be. That it has to be near transit centers, that in the long run, it's going to reduce traffic congestion, because people won't have to drive their cars to come in and out of the basin. They'll be able to use the public transport. I also think that people need to understand that there has been a population decrease in the basin over the last decade, and that needs to be pointed out. And also the fact that many of the issues that have been raised in the public comments are really not at all related to the, this plan. I think most of them are related to the day travelers. They're the ones that are creating the traffic. They're the ones that are littering. And there is the ones that are creating the overcongestion. So I would like there to be some discussion as possible as to how we can be more transparent and communicate this plan to our constituents in the Tahoe Basin to let them know why we think that this is a viable plan to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I think that's a good comment, and I think we can talk more about that in this meeting, probably. Process transparency, trust, et cetera, assurances. How about Ms. Morales O'Neil?
Thank you. I think we all agree. I mean, I, I think Susan just made a really good point about the daytime travelers. And a lot of those are, are workforce people who can't afford to live in the Tahoe Basin, but they travel there to work. So I think that's a really good point. And, and I, I know the goal is there for workforce housing. And I'm wondering if Karen, maybe you can touch on the deed restrictions, the number of units, and the goal to really be able to provide affordable units versus more, you know, more achievable units. And if lenders have looked at this plan, especially with the market right now, because I, I think if, if there are answers there, those are important to see that, that, that this is a achievable project and that the, the research is there. I, I'm just curious to, to know about that so that these don't end up being all, you know, those that are making more than the median, making 70, 80,000 a year, the ones that would be getting these deed restrictive and more achievable versus affordable. I don't know if you can answer that.
Sure. I can speak to that. So the, when the, in the 2012 regional plan and also the 2018 Development Rights Strategic Initiative, the bonus units were split into two separate pools. So half of them were reserved for deed restricted affordable units, so about 560 units, 562. And the other half were allowed to be used for moderate and achievable, but they can also be used for affordable. So there is, you know, some of the units are reserved for affordable and they can't go into the higher income pools. That's one element. We did also, as the APC will recall, we did bring forward in April some changes to our achievable definition that we worked through with this committee. And those changes are what's in effect now. We did work with a lender on those to ensure that that a lender would be able to finance properties that are built with the achievable deed restriction. As, you know, we've heard in the presentation, you know, this proposal is intended to benefit both affordable, moderate, and achievable. And the low, you know, affordable and moderate will probably need some subsidies, some help from local jurisdictions. But this will also help make it easier for, you know, local governments to help subsidize these projects, because it will lower the overall construction cost. And if there's any, I'm not sure if I answered, fully answered that question.
That was great. That was really good. Thank you, Karen. That was helpful.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Kate. Mr. Kutchnicki?
Thank you. I think this was discussed earlier in the presentation. We were talking about the area wide treatment systems. I just wanted to ask, so I have it perfectly clear in my head. So if I'm a developer for one of these projects and there's an existing area wide treatment system, then there'll be an analysis that's done to show that my project is going to be able to, there's capacity available to, to treat the runoff from my project. And if so, I can, I can connect up to that area wide project. If there's not an area wide project, then I can work with TRPA staff if I think there might be an opportunity somewhere near my project area and, and work towards getting an area wide project started. Or I can have the option of treating all my runoff onsite if I can infiltrate it there. Is, is that correct?
So it's dependent on the location. Within town centers, we are requiring that the projects tie into the area wide stormwater treatments. Outside of town centers, within the multifamily areas, there is less opportunity for area wides that exist right now. So we have included the option to do BMPs onsite. But there is that requirement that the local jurisdiction, you know, monitor and make sure that those be, that those BMPs are being maintained over time.
Okay, and with respect to that, that kind of keeps me up for my next question is, will the project owners be required to pay into a maintenance fund for the respective jurisdictions? And do these local jurisdictions all have the mechanisms in place to accept this funding?
So for area wides, projects typically do pay an annual maintenance fee. It, you know, differs depending on where the location is. For the, the onsite BMPs, there is, you know, not, John Hester mentioned earlier that we're going to be setting up a process with the Public Works Department to sort of better figure out what the process will be. But I, I do assume that there probably would be a fee associated with the annual monitoring of the BMPs.
If I could just add to that, Jason, this is John Marshall, that really it's, that's between the developer and the local jurisdiction or the operator of the area wide. As long as they are, I mean, they have to demonstrate that they are a participant of that, of that area wide, and whatever requirements whoever is running that area wide treatment or responsible for it wants to impose on the members or the participants in that, that'll be up to them. But at a minimum, they have to show that they have met the requirements to participate in that area wide treatment.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, just a comment related to that. I think that that's, it's a great concept, because on the Nevada side, we have a lot of parcel based BMPs. And what, what we're, you know, it's great that those are implemented, but in terms of maintenance, it, it's, it's a bit difficult to ensure that these things are being maintained appropriately. So when you put it in, you know, the context of an area wide treatment that the jurisdiction is going to be required to demonstrate that it is performing, it is being maintained regularly. It, it's just much easier and probably a better system. So so that's great.
Jason, this is John Hester. To give you more specifics, what we're proposing is in your packet on page 117. If you get there and look at code section, proposed code section 30.4, point 2, point V, point 6. We're actually, I think we're doing the same thing you just said, which is we want the local entity, city, county, or district utility to take responsibility for that. And if it's necessary, have you, if it's on the Nevada side or the Honton, it's on the California side, permit it. We're assuming it would, whatever local government took responsibility for it, would want to have you include that in their clarity credits to meet their TMDL requirements, because that would be a big way to do that. So we're hoping it fits really well within the the water quality and TMDL standards and processes we already have in place. Hope that helps.
It does. Appreciate that. Just an observation to, you know, I, I know that, that the impetus behind this amendment is to, you know, promote walkable communities and, and reduce BMPs. Just an observation, you know, Tahoe oftentimes is covered in snow for a, for a large portion of the year. And so And so I wonder, has there been any outreach to the jurisdictions and talking about, you know, keeping those bed paths clear during the winter time so that, you know, people can actually get out and and it is a walkable community? And we are reducing those trips?
This is John Hester again. We've been speaking with the local jurisdictions about that. Probably the best response, I want to punt this to John Hitchcock because his council just put money in their budget for snow removal in specific pedestrian quarters.
That's correct.
Yeah, that is, that does, has been occurring for years, actually, Jason, with the Measure S funding on the South Shore, I know, where we could, we dedicate funding to clear the bike paths and put multi-use paths in South Shore. And I think, I don't live on the North Shore, but I do see that I think the trail managed by TCPUD is also managed in the winter time. So that, I think that's a great point. We we need those paths open. People are going to use them.
Yeah, I would just encourage that conversation and those, because I have, you know, not been all around the basin in the winter to to see what different jurisdictions are doing, but you know, that is an issue if we're, if this policy is going to succeed to its maximum extent.
Thanks, Jason.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any other hands raised. While we were just talking about the region-wide treatment, I just want to thank you, Alyssa, for for addressing some of my comments that we talked about where it used to say owned, the treatment system had to be owned by the public entity, and I think now it's a little broader with the assurance that the local jurisdiction needs to engage in that agreement with the developer to ensure the BMPs are not only installed correctly, but maintained in perpetuity. So I think that that's good. I'm happy with the way that reads now. Okay, I'm going to go into the room now for APC member comments. Hitch?
Alyssa, so for for outside centers, for the onsite BMPs, I think from, I haven't had a chance to talk to Public Works about this, but I think it's going to be, it's hard pressed that this, that this local jurisdictions will step up and take responsibility for private BMPs onsite. Would you, would would TRPA consider requiring a deed restriction? And well, having the developer complete your BMP maintenance log and then have that recorded as part of a deed restriction that requires continued maintenance. At least then there's a mechanism that local jurisdiction can rely on to enforce maintenance rather than than the city or the local jurisdiction to actually take on maintenance itself because it's private property, just concept. Oh, and one more. The the height outside centers, the additional eleven feet, how does that work? Is it, so for example, I propose a project that is a roof pitch of three and four twelve roof pitch, which I think is about thirty-two feet. You get the additional eleven feet up to forty-one. And then you said that you had to ply the one-to-one stair step. Where does the one-to-one step back occur? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out my head architecturally how that's going to work. Because you know, in the in the tourist quarry plan and the Tahoe Valley plan, we have the same stair step one-to-one, but it applies at the setback line. And it doesn't actually require the building to be stair step, it requires the building to be outside of that, 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 that slope. Does that make sense?
So any, let's see, any, the way that it's written right now is any height above what is currently allowed would have to be step back one for one. I think what you're saying is, what if they're, I guess, the roof pitch, if it's not as shallow, is that one-to-one step back?
So if you have a building facade and you require the one-to-one setback, so the building is going to have to be stepped in one, right? And so I'm architecturally, I just having a hard time imagining how that's going to work. Your one-to-one has to start somewhere, that slope, right? And the whole idea is you don't want the building to encroach into that, the slope. And so where does that slope start? Like, for example, in the TCAP, it starts at the setback line, thirty feet up, then you draw your one-to-one line, and then the structure has to be located behind that emblem. Does that make sense?
I think what we may want to do is sit down with you, John, and figure out how to write this. I think the the objective is to give a little extra height for those adjacent.
Yeah, and also reduce that the mass impacts to the adjacent neighborhood.
Yes.
And also to make it clear, there's two different incentives, and they're either or. If you get the shallower roof pitch, you don't get the additional eleven feet. If you're taking the additional eleven feet in a transition zone, you have to, that eleven feet is added to what's in the table in chapter thirty-seven now. So you don't get both of those incentives. They're not cumulative.
Okay, that's a good clarification, Karen. Thank you. Garth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, thank you for bringing up that comment in the zone multifamily areas with increased coverage and having the BMPs being maintained by a by a public entity. I don't see that happening, and I think that basically just by including that, you'd be kicking the can down the road in terms of, in terms of analysis. My other question is, in in decreasing parking in these areas, especially in the zone multifamily areas, I think essentially what probably is going to happen is you're going to have people park on the street. And really, you're going to be pushing that impact off property onto public streets where maybe you don't have all the necessary BMPs. And I just did, did you guys take that into consideration in the IEC in terms of water quality impacts?
Yeah, that is definitely part of the IEC, and it's what we are proposing to mitigate that is that the developer, in order to take less parking, to have less than the parking minimums, the developer will have to point to a parking analysis that shows what the actual demand is for developments of that type. So for instance, there's a parking analysis out there associated with Sugar Pine Village that shows that affordable housing developments close to transit, the average parking, number of parking units per housing unit is one point one. So they could point to a study like that and say, we're anticipating one point one unit of parking space is needed. And then they would have to show how they are accommodating basically one point one vehicles per unit. So either through onsite parking, through a parking management strategy, maybe they have a car share or a very aggressive transit strategy, but they would actually need to show that they have a plan for the actual demand.
Okay, and is that plan, so I'm sorry, does that plan include requirements for, you know, BMPs along the street? Like, let's say the the street that's adjacent to this project, it doesn't have curb and gutter, and there's open lots or spaces along the side of the road where these cars are going to be parking. Does that plan have the teeth to be able to include BMPs to decrease those impacts to water quality?
The parking has to be, you know, legal. So, you know, if it's depending what you mean by curb and gutter, if it's already uncovered areas, you know, that may be sufficient, and whether it requires to put in curb and gutter is, you know, maybe a part of the project. It may not be depending on the scope of the project. But it has to, if you're going to be relying on on-street parking, it has to be on the street, not on dirt.
Okay. In the plan?
Correct. As part of the project approval.
Okay. I just, I'm a little concerned about that, just knowing that there's, the people have the potential and the willingness to park where they want to and not necessarily where the plan says this is where we're supposed to park. And so I just, I feel like there's just a little bit of a disconnect, and by having additional people come in, not provide the parking, and 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 don't get me wrong, I understand the need for decreased vehicles. I'm just a little concerned that we're maybe just pushing these parking areas or the people that that are parking into areas that aren't fully BMPed and that there could be potential impacts there. So I just wanted to make that point. I think that's, that's, that's an issue that I have. The other thing that I that I wanted to talk about, and this is going all the way back to the very beginning of your slides, where you talk about phase one, two, and three of this whole process. With 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 phase one, and and could you maybe just pull that slide back up? I know it's, it was like slide three or four. It was all the way at the very beginning. Yeah, thank you. Could you maybe just speak to the process? Because I think this is important to sort of put into the greater, take a step back and and talk about this whole process and and phase one, how those, how phase one was analyzed, and I know that we're, here we are in the middle of phase two. And then at the bottom of phase three, it says that they're starting this. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I want to make sure that the overall process here is taken into consideration, and we're not maybe potentially piecemealing the analysis bit by bit. Because if if there's a chance that the sum, the whole is greater than the sum of each of these individual parts. So could you just sort of reiterate what sort of environmental process was done? Not just for myself, but I think for everyone in this room for phase one? And then also, what is in the future for phase three?
So for phase one, that was allowing accessory dwelling units, and we did an initial environmental checklist for that, and it also allowed motel residential conversion of motel density to residential density. And for this phase, we are also doing an environmental analysis, or sorry, we're doing an IEC. For phase three, maybe I'll let John speak to that. We have funding to do EIS, and we are anticipating that that could be needed.
Thank you, Karen. Just, just for the record here, in in phase one, when were those two IECs completed?
So phase one, well, it was one IEC for those two things combined. We completed it in July twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. And then for exactly for phase three, I mean, you said it's it's starting. Can you expand on where you are in the in that part of the process?
So we are planning to start, you know, meeting with the Tahoe Living Working Group about phase three in January. January thirty-first will be the kickoff meeting. And we have received a grant from the state of California to partially fund that process. We are currently soliciting for a consultant to help with that. So that is underway already.
Okay, thank you. One last thing, Mr. Chair. I think it's important, you were you were stating that the the initial environmental checklist that was prepared for this project, or for this proposal, excuse me, is going to be revised. Personally, I think it's very important that that revised IEC come back to us before it goes to the governing board. I mean, considering that the Advisory Planning Commission is a technical advisory committee, I think that bypassing those revisions and not not giving us a chance to review them and accept them and and discuss, I I think it's important that it comes back to us before it was then. Thank you. Thanks, Garth. Jason?
Good morning. Thanks for the presentation. I have a couple. Between all the communications I've received from the community and public, there's just a couple of themes that I think you've touched on some of them, but I'd like to just talk about them directly so that it's it's out in the clear. One is process. The comments that that I've received have been that it hasn't been transparent, it's been truncated, it's moving too quickly. Can you speak to the process that you've gone through to date, the timeline that it's taken? I think there's another slide that touched on the number of meetings that you've had. Because thi- this seems to be an issue that people are pretty passionate about. I want to better understand the process that we've gone through to get to this point and and whether or not you feel like there are any gaps.
So we started this process in October of twenty twenty-one with our Tahoe Living Working Group. Those meetings are publicly noticed and open to the public, and we have had participation from, you know, many of the commentators that we've heard, you know, do participate in those meetings. We came back to that group in April of twenty twenty-three with a, or sorry, we then went to the governing board in July of twenty twenty-two to vet what we had worked on with the Tahoe Living Working Group and had kind of a workshop with the governing board, and that's where we heard from them that they wanted us to kind of analyze the full, you know, range of what development standards were needed. We then, you know, came back, worked on the proposal at that, and then we went back to the Tahoe Living Working Group in April of this year with kind of a more fleshed-out proposal. And after that, we started an intensive, you know, program of outreach throughout the summer where we were at farmers markets, we reached out to many of the different groups that Alyssa showed on the on her slide. We, you know, have our newsletter, we alerted groups that if they wanted us to come and present to them, that we could. We made sure that we've done multiple meetings with the Family Resource Center in South Shore, and we had a meeting with the Sierra Community House Promontourist Group on the North Shore. We've been at the Business Expo Fall Fest, put on by the Eldorado Community Hub three times. So we've really been trying to be out in the community. We've also run articles in the Tribune. Julie Regan has mentioned this many times in her articles. And then we did have the webinar and survey that went out to, it was, you know, just the general public, a statistically valid sample that reached over twelve hundred people. So we do feel like we have done quite a bit of outreach and gotten feedback. You know, it is, we understand that this is something that, you know, people are seeing that this could affect their actual community. So we, you know, definitely appreciate the feedback about transparency and input. We we definitely, we treat this like we've done all of our other processes, what kind of a roadmap of how we do outreach, and definitely willing to consider some more. Did you want to? Oh, and we have a website, yeah, where where we have a frequently asked questions, and we've been trying to post the information, or when we get questions, we try to put information up there in a kind of concise manner and, you know, put it out on our newsletter that that's available.
Is there, there any group that has wanted to meet that you haven't met with?
No, not, no, not that I'm aware of. No.
Okay, and then following this meeting, walk us through the steps from here to the end?
So following this meeting, we're going to ARPEC next week, and then we're planning to go to governing board on December thirteenth.
So just to clarify, ARPEC, meaning the governing board committee, so it'll be at a notice governing board meeting open to the public a week from today, and then the governing board meeting in three weeks from that point?
December thirteenth.
Okay, so there will be at least two more opportunities in addition to today for public comment on this item.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. On environmental review, building on what Garth had mentioned, the comments that that I've seen and received via email and phone calls is just that it's, there's not been adequate environmental review. We're missing, particularly, there's been a lot of comments about missing potential cumulative impacts, which I think is what you were getting at, Garth. Can you, can you just speak a little bit more and expand on what you, how you answered Garth's question as to the depth of environmental review that's happened to date and what will happen moving forward?
Can I start? You guys fill in. This is John Marshall again. So let's remember the scope of the project. So the scope of the project are these amendments that apply to a relatively restricted both in terms of number of units and places in which the units can go or where the incentives might actually be available as described by staff. So that's the project that was analyzed in the IEC. The IEC is an expanded checklist. There's substantial analysis that's done for each of the questions that triggered that extensive analysis. Garth, I did want to say that the revisions that we're talking about are not substantial to the analysis. They're mainly clarifications of making sure, for example, that, you know, this analysis is really limited to the, to the uh is really limited to the to the proposal at issue. It's not trying to provide cover for some other project, just to make certain that the public knows that that's the case. So that's kind of when we talk about revisions, we're not talking about substantial additions to um the analysis, but more a clear language of clarification. I just want to make certain that that's kind of what we're talking about in terms of revisions. You guys want to add anything more to that?
Yeah, I mean, we did receive some comments on um ways that we could um just better flesh out how the um the proposal is takes into account that A G um memo on wildfire and evacuation. We did feel like we called out how it aligned, but we, you know, got some comments that we could point out a few other aspects um of those strategies that are, you know, our proposal uses strategies that are consistent with trying to reduce um evacuation and wildfire impacts. So to come just include those a little bit more.
Uh, on that note, um, there was pretty extensive environmental review of the regional plan update on the whole concept of town centers. I I'm assuming that was referenced and uses the basis for the environmental review for these proposed amendments.
Correct. Yeah, tiered off of the twenty twelve regional plan.
Okay. Um, one of the other things that's that's been a pretty consistent comment is that this is going to create sort of undesirable density. Um, and sort of overwhelm downtowns and and town centers. I I'm sort of struggling with on one side, members of the community feeling like town centers are going to be overwhelmed. But the reality is the number of units is capped. It's not changing. The these units can and will likely happen at one time or another. Really what's changing is the density within those town center locations as to how many units of that pool could go in that location. This could potentially increase the number of units within the town centers, but it doesn't increase the overall number in the basin as a whole. So it's going from distributed development to more intense development in a location. Um, I I guess what what were the conversations during, this goes back to the process and engaging with the community? What were the discussions during all of those meetings? Because I I wasn't at all of them, obviously. Um, about this particular issue, because I I think this is a point where there are a lot of statements made in the community about this. Very few of them have any data to support them. But there is also the data that I I haven't seen the data that disputes them. And so I think the the reality is is we need to address this issue head on. Because th- this is, and it's not just related to the issue we're talking about today. This comes up on every single project and program and and topic that I deal with on all things Tahoe is there's too many people, we're going to be overwhelmed, there's too many cars. Um, so can you speak to, you know, how this particular issue was addressed through the process and through those community meetings?
Yeah, so this question does come up. And we have had a slide in the past that shows the difference between the distributed development scenario versus getting that same amount of development into smaller areas. And we can, you know, bring that slide back in a future presentation. But basically, just to drive your point home a little bit more, although this would be encouraging, already allowed density to be further concentrated in the town centers. The only place it's really moving from, it's currently planned to be within the bonus unit boundary, which is the half mile buffer of transit. It includes town centers and multifamily zones. All of this development is already allowed to be dispersed throughout that area. This amendment would allow individual parcels to have higher parcel level density than it did before. So it does not at all change the overall density in that whole boundary. It just gives more flexibility by parcel. So, you know, that is what we've tried to explain. We can continue to work on a graphic or something that explains it better. And yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah, I I I think the fundamental issue is is that um tha- that concept makes sense to me. And I my guess is it makes sense to a lot of people. I think what's hard is when you own the property right next door to the parcel, that's going to have more density on it. I think that's really what it comes down to. And I think as a community, we have to decide how important is this issue? Because it's got to go somewhere. And that's the whole point of the town centers was to create this um situation where we could deal with some of these issues within the town centers. That's that's why they were created within the regional plan. There was so much discussion around them. But I think there has to be some sensitivity, and this may get to whether it's parking or water quality. As we move to implement this, as the area plans get updated, is there are impacts to the people who own property adjacent to those parcels. And and I think sometimes that gets forgotten. And so I would just encourage us to make sure as we we actually start to implement, you know, policy and and um and goals are great. But when it comes to how these things look on the ground, that's really where people feel it. And I think we need to be more sensitive to that. And it's you you can't address that in an environmental checklist. You can't address it in a programmatic way. I think it's the things we need to think about as we permit and approve projects. Um, the last thing that was brought up is just that relaxing this criteria is going to lead to, you know, developers just going wild, having luxury and high-end uh developments uh take advantage of of these changes. I I'm looking for where and how that can happen. Help me here, because this I I I have no less than twenty five comments on this. And I I I'm not understanding where they're coming from.
Yeah, I think I can explain that. Um, one of the issues that I think has come up is that people uh fear that the term achievable is just sort of a euphemism for luxury development. That developers will, because there is no income cap on the achievable um deed restriction, it it just has this requirement that the household work for a local locally based employer. Um, and it also has a requirement that the household, that home be their primary residence. But there's a concern that developers will just say, well, there's no limit. So I'm going to build a really big achievable unit, and I'm going to sell it for two million dollars. Um, we we really don't think that's going to happen. It's a pretty big burden to take on a deed restriction. Most developers really don't want to have a deed restriction on their property. Most people who are buying a property don't want to have a deed restriction on their property because that means that they won't be able to realize the same property value gains that they could if they buy a market rate unit. So we think that anyone who can actually afford to buy a market rate unit is going to buy a market rate unit. Um, rentals are generally used by our workforce, even when they're not deed restricted. So as long as these stay rentals, you know, they're primarily used for the workforce. So that is the concern that I believe is where that concern is stemming from. It's just, you know, this idea that developers will see this as an opportunity to build really large units and call them achievable.
But if they're deed restricted, it it doesn't, it doesn't matter. If if the deed restriction is on that parcel, it limits what who you can either sell it to or who you can rent it to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I guess I would just end with, I this is a a complex issue that has certainly charges emotion on on many sides. I I also got comments from developers saying this isn't enough. We need more. This isn't make projects easier to deliver. In addition to the comments that I received from the community on, you know, concerns about all the things that I just discussed. Uh, again, I I think there are limitations, and I would just remind this group. I think there are limitations to what we can address of those concerns at the policy level. And there are going to be things for our local jurisdiction partners, the county and the city, that need to be addressed as we permit projects as they move forward. And I think those these issues shouldn't be lost. We need to make sure, and we may want to summarize what some of these concerns are, which ones can be addressed by policy and which ones are best addressed by permitting or or local codes and ordinances. And then um share that information with the local jurisdictions as these projects move forward. Um, the status quo is not acceptable. We need to move forward with something. Um, I don't think we're ever going to find the perfect solution that's going to make all sides happy. Uh, typically, when both sides are mad, that's you're you're in a good place. Um, I'm not sure that we're there right now, but um I I just, I think those those pieces are important. And and I I think what gets lost in the process sometimes that leads to the im- im- the input in comments that we receive is um there are things that maybe can't be addressed by the process, but they need to be acknowledged during it. And so, you know, these were four things that I thought were important to bring up. Thanks.
Really good comments. Um, I was going to bring a few of those things up myself, so thank you for doing it for me. Can I just pull on the luxury development string just a little bit more? Because a few few meetings ago, we had the nine four seven Tahoe project in Incline Village that took advantage of the two-step subdivision process, right? Where they first created multifamily housing and then wanted to subdivide it in the airspace way to condominiums. It was also a mixed-use project that didn't have a great, in my opinion, ratio of mixed use within it. And I think that's led to some further changes that TRPA is making now, right? We've learned from that. So will, is there a possibility that this process could create a nine four seven Tahoe type project? Where they get the deed restrictions, they build the affordable units, and then they decide to uh subdivide them in the airspace way and move them to some sort of luxury condominium type project?
No. So what's been happening with the two-step process is that units like apartments that were de facto affordable. We've seen some older condominiums that were de facto being used de facto affordable. Um, when someone wants to subdivide them, they, if there, if the people in those units are affordable or moderate income, we have a requirement in our code that says that if you want to subdivide those, you have to set aside a certain amount of those as deed restricted, affordable or moderate. That's one process that we have. We you can all, if the people living in the units aren't low or moderate income. John Marshall might want to speak to the subdivision process for that. But if I don't believe you can do a two-step subdivision without deed currently, without deed restricting any units if the current residents in those units aren't low income or moderate income households. Is that correct?
Generally, yes, there may be mitigation requirements that you have to satisfy if you're going to convert it from a rental to a to an ownership. But I think the the key, the key point is um, there's no provision, I and correct me if I'm wrong, in what being proposed to stop a two-step subdivision. You would still have to have those deed restrictions on all the units that would result. So all the units that would result either either rental or um for owner or for sale would have to have a deed restriction of either affordable, moderate, or achievable. Um, and so the si- scenario you're talking about, they would be, you know, doing a two-step on a on a um large number of achievable units, but those all would have to be achievable individually um in any subsequent two-step process.
Okay, so the two-step is allowed with a deed restriction, but and there but but there's moni- a monitoring and reporting program that TRP has in place, right, to ensure that every year that there's compliance within those units?
Correct.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, other APC members in the room? Steve?
Oh. Um, lost my shot. Uh, yeah, we'll come back.
Okay, Kevin?
Good presentation, and I've gotten a lot more clarity today. Thank you. Um, I think Jason really hit the nail on the head with the distinction between the numbers game of how many units we have. It is still the same number of units. It's how they're configured, the concentration, which, and we have a very serious problem we're trying to solve, and we need action. And the reality of increasing height and density changes the community character in ways we have. It's it's a conversation, like what are what's most important to us? The expediency of solving the problem or the long-term character that we value in that's that's there's a broad range of perspectives on that. Um, one question I have is has there been any analysis of how many, like, I'm talking about height increase specifically? Has there been any analysis of how many properties that would like unlock? From, you know, economic analysis, how many properties are we talking about? We're not talking about an urban setting where we have a ton of vacant raw developable land. So in in our Tahoe context, how many properties could this potentially open up and make development work financially according to the studies?
Well, I mean, we do have, you know, numbers of vacant parcels and vacant buildable parcels in these areas. So we don't know exactly which parcel will take advantage of these. But we have about a hundred and eighty vacant developable parcels in our town centers. There's about four times that in uh multifamily areas. So again, there's only, there's nine hundred and forty six bonus units left. About half of those are actually already reserved for projects that we've already talked about, like Dollar Creek, L T C C dorms. So we're really only talking about four hundred and forty six units that will be distributed among these areas and those parcels. So, you know, there are parcels that are vacant where these could, you know, happen. Certainly it won't happen on all of them. We're thinking this is going to be on a few parcels.
Yeah. A follow-up question to that. The height issue is is such a hot-button issue and has been for a while. It's not going away. And I understand why. Um, and honestly, for myself, I've been less concerned about it, but through conversations with my own community, um, I've I've come to understand where people are coming from a bit more and and some of the concerns. Um, I feel like it's a very site-specific question to answer, right? Is it appropriate here versus there? And I'm pretty uncomfortable with with proceeding with a basin-wide solution. And I know that there are opportunities to do, I think it's a zoning text amendment, to allow for increased height on a particular parcel. Is that accurate? That there is a process today that um to make a project work on a couple of key parcels where it makes sense, that there could be an alternative, like it a yeah, through, say, a zoning text amendment where that site is evaluated and that project is.
Sorry, uh, the short answer is no.
No.
So we need, so the you're kind of talking about is in some senses of variance. Um, and so what we want to do is create the areas in which those individual projects can occur. So that's why you see a a general zoning approach to density, uh, height and coverage. Um, they still have to meet, you know, all the project level findings. And you'll see part of the height that we're, members that we're talking about is this stepping back, uh, which is a height-related concern that you're not shading, and there's also the shading provisions. Um, so some of those, we can address some of those um associated uh impacts through kind of more generic uh plan-level programmatic concerns.
Yeah.
Um, but we don't do like individual uh is a specific height appropriate for this specific uh parcel. We at the parcel level, we try to mitigate those impacts associated with um that that proposed development. So we see all the the site-specific concerns.
Okay, that helps to clarify. Last question or observation is when we're talking about projects that could get to a height of, say, sixty five feet, we're talking about substantial capital needed, oftentimes more public resources needed, um discounted free land, maybe free commodities, things like that to make these projects often work. We're also talking about generally long timeline, sequo process, the whole thing. I see opportunities all the time and around me right now where there's, you know, six units here, four units there, eight units there that would love to um redevelop. And I I I know a couple of stuck projects in my Placer County, North Tahoe area, where, you know, half a dozen units are just that stagnant because of parking issues and things like that. Small neighborhood scale, multifamily, the kind of thing that I think most people can get behind and agree would be a total win. Um, so has there been uh much discussion in this process? And I haven't really, I've been involved in the meetings. What can we do to reduce the barriers, like to increase um allowable coverage, to reduce mitigation requirements, things like that for smaller, say, four, six, ten-unit projects, where it's not as much about height as it is about maybe realistic density? And Kings Beach is a good example. We have very tiny lots already. Um, and there's opportunities to do many of these types of projects that I think would meet a lot less resistance and a lot more support and be able to turn around quicker to get a quicker win, show some wins, show some progress without really changing community character.
Yeah, and one of the comments that or some of the comments that we've heard a lot are that we shouldn't allow additional height and density and changes to parking that instead community should focus on generating subsidies through, you know, donating land or having some sort of local revenue source that contributes to these projects to. That instead, community should focus on generating subsidies through, you know, donating land or having some sort of local revenue source that contributes to these projects to offset the cost. Because the reality is if we don't allow more flexibility in the development standards, it's going to cost a lot to, to build those units, whoever provides it, whether it's a private developer or through a public subsidy. So that's part of the idea with allowing local jurisdictions to come back to us to opt out with an alternative strategy. Where if that community says we don't want to have the additional height, that's not how we want to deal with this, we want to have a local funding source that subsidizes it. Um, that's one way that we're trying to get at that. Um, while moving quick, you know, while taking some steps because it is a critical issue and it takes a long time to update area plans. And we basically feel like we need to have a region wide solution that, you know, moves, moves forward in the near term. Um, another way I think to get at making it easier for these smaller projects is what we'll be looking at in phase three. Where in, in phase three, we're really trying to drill down into how our regulations, TRPA's regulations, like our growth management system, our coverage management, our coverage transfers. How those requirements uh, may be, you know, are, are those requirements applied sort of equitatively based on size? Uh, we've really found that like particularly with our coverage transfer system, that that. Multi fam- small multifamily have a kind of a higher mitigation burden cost wise than larger projects. Larger projects can really absorb costs into their, into their project and they actually have a lower mitigation cost per square foot than a smaller project. So those are the kinds of things we're going to look at in phase three. So we do expect that in phase three, we'll be able to potentially uh, make it easier for those smaller projects. So this phase, you know, we're introducing some development standard changes that make it easier for those projects. And then phase three might look at, you know, finding ways to kind of shift the incentives even more, but more related to like just how our system works as a whole.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Steve, to share. Just, uh, I have some observations and a couple of concerns, but I do want to wait until after we have the public comment period before I get into those. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Hitch?
Um, yeah, in reading all the comments that um, we received from the public, I, I sense that one of the concerns is this one size. You know, one size fit approach and particularly in the um, areas outside town centers, um, which would require us to opt out rather than opt, than opt in. Um, because as a local jurisdiction, we haven't had the opportunity yet to go out to our community and discuss, you know, particularly the additional eleven feet height and whether they are actually. On, on board with that concept. And so I would encourage you to maybe take a different approach, particularly for the outside. Outside the center, allowing local jurisdictions to opt in rather than opt out. Cause then they'll give us time to work with our community to decide that eleven feet is really what we want. Um, and um, obviously I think the coverage issue, that's, that won't be an issue. I think it's the height is going to be the biggest, biggest issue for us from both jur- jurisdiction perspective. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Um, we're good in the room. I have a couple of comments, but I see two more hands raised from APC members. So let's go with these two, then I'll finish up. And then we'll go to the public, okay? So Emily and then Eric.
Thank you. Uh, I, I wanted to hear some of the other comments and questions before contributing. Um, in North Lake Tahoe and Placer County, we are almost eighty percent second homes up here. We don't limit that. Types of housing and occupancy. Um, so given that. The, some sort of changes are absolutely necessary for us to have workforce housing. In the last twenty years, other than tax credit affordable projects, of which we've only had a couple. Um, we've only seen one private workforce housing project come forward. And it was a small conversion of a commercial to residential. It wasn't even a new pro- a new build. So we aren't seeing it on the private side. Um, we don't have enough subsidy to subsidize this type of housing. Beyond the tax credit affordable, which is pretty deep levels of affordability. Um, I did just participate a couple of months ago in a moving, the Moving Mountains Summit with other mountain towns. And that was uh, financiers, developers and local jurisdictions and manufacturers all focused on workforce housing in the Western mountain towns. And I can safely say we are behind. So the other mountain towns, I think, have had maybe some more severe uh, prices than us in the past. But we're quickly catching up to them and we are behind on building housing compared to our peers in the other towns. So, you know, I think no solutions, no one solution will be the answer. And we can find flaws in every approach. And I think that's what we're hearing a lot of from the public. Um, but we don't really have a choice. If we want our local workers to live here, we have to think differently because I think as somebody earlier said, what we have been doing is not working. Um, I think the phase three will be very important in this toolkit of solutions. And I do want to point out that um, our Tahoe Basin area plan amendments that we are bringing forward to TRPA in the next couple of months. Are a completely separate process. I know there has been a lot of confusion from members of the public and it's. I think it's because we are all playing catch up right now. TRPA is playing catch up, Placer County is playing catch up. We have several things happening at once. Um, to try and get the housing built. So um, kudos to the staff here on bringing this forward. And we look forward to working through this implementation.
Thanks, Emily. I think those are good comments. Eric?
Thank you. Hello, Eric Young, Washoe County. Um, I wanted to remind everybody that. There are some APC members, including myself, who are on the Tahoe Living Working Group. Um, we participate in those meetings. And um, my experience on those meetings is um, it is very good experience. Uh, it is, I would encourage everybody to look and see who the other members on the Tahoe Living Working Group are. And when Karen fires us back up again in the new year. I would encourage you to stop in, peek in on one of those meetings or more if you can. They are, I've been on many working groups, both for TRPA and otherwise. And uh, these meetings are some of those most thoughtful, focused, dedicated. To solving the issue meetings that I've ever been on. Um, it's filled with a variety of people from a variety of backgrounds. Who all bring their viewpoints, who ask excellent questions, dis- difficult questions. Who put the staff like Karen and others uh, through the wringer and asking them to bring us more information and to research things for us. You will notice that um, this presentation is very well researched. When we ask a question about the market. Uh, well, how would this work? How does the coverage work on this and that? That they are able to answer our questions. They're able to answer your questions today about. The real estate market and why coverage or why height is important and how these things are different from one another. They've done an enormous amount of research. Um, partly because of such a great working group environment that has encouraged them and. Um, asked them to please do that research. Um, so I, I, I just want to point back uh, to the work that has been done leading us to this point. Not only has it been all of those public meetings um, that were shown on the slide. But it's a group of really dedicated, bright people that I, I really enjoy listening to and hearing their questions and hearing their input. Um, so they are public. It's extremely transparent. Uh, the work isn't done and I would encourage you to peek in on the rest of the work of that group because it's a really dedicated worthwhile group. And then my final comment would be that many years ago, when we finally did adopt this town center concept in the regional plan update. Well, I think we knew it was going to be painful to do it. I think we knew it wasn't going to happen overnight. We knew it was going to take compromise. Uh, we knew we were going to have to get rid of other things to, to make this happen. And now we're starting to see some of it happen. We're starting to see things that will bring more development to the core. That will bring, um, as was mentioned before, less distributed development and more concentrated development. Exactly as the regional plan envisioned many years ago. And we have really just begun to see it happen and just begun to feel the pain of it. And I hope that as we begin to feel that pain, we don't just give up on it. That we listen to it, we adjust to the pain. Um, we understand where it's coming from, but that we don't give up on this concept because we really have just begun on implementing. The town center concept of reducing the distributed development and making things more concentrated where we can serve them better. Um, so those are my comments. Thanks once again for listening to me.
Thank you, Eric. Good comments. I think we're good. I just had a couple of things I was going to mention and then I do want to move us on to public comment and give everyone um, their opportunity to speak to us. We, we do want to hear from you. I think there's been, you know, I think my APC members have said so many things that I wanted to say really well and probably better than I can say them. So I don't want to repeat all that. Um, and thank you for that. Um, I think there's been some accusations that maybe not accusations, but maybe some statements that we don't, we don't care about the lake. Um, you know, we're pro developer. Uh, I just, I just want to speak for myself and say that, you know, I could not care about the lake anymore. Um, that's the reason I think I live here and almost all of us live here. We work every day, I do. Um, to try to better the lake and ensure the environmental protection and quality of this basin. So. Um, I hope that that sounds genuine because it is, and I, and I think I can speak for my colleagues that we really share that sentiment. Are we pro developer? You know, no, not in the sense that I think it's being um, implied, but we, we are pro developer in that we do want to see affordable housing projects get built. I think it's been articulated that the system we have is not working and it's my understanding that. Uh, developers are not making large sums of money currently on building affordable housing. Otherwise, we would see more of it. These units are available. They're not being taken advantage of. And so the trick is trying to build a system. Where developers can make a small amount of money because they deserve a profit. To build the housing that we all need. I know if I moved to the basin right now, I would certainly be looking for one of these units to live in. Um, we're talking about housing for folks like all of, I don't, I don't know everyone in the room, but like for me. People like, like us need housing in, in today's world in Tahoe and this is incredibly important. Um, so I just want to put that out there. Uh, I just want to talk about the I E C for a second. There was some additional analysis done for, you know, to help local jurisdictions using the sequel process. I just want to make it clear to the public that these types of projects, when they come before a local jurisdiction, even if these are amendments are made. Will involve a discretionary process, which includes public hearings. And it will involve the sequel process on the California side, not on the Nevada side. Um, and so there will be additional environmental analysis conducted at the project scale that will include public comment. Uh, and public approval of those projects. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear. For the public to understand because I think that's really important. Um, and then one other thing I just want to talk on is it, we did, we did receive a tremendous amount of public comment and thank you for that. Um, and, and it sounds like everyone reviewed it. And so thank you to APC members. Um, and I did. And some of the other comments I think talked about. TRPA should, should incentivize affordable housing in other ways. And we got a number of these comments. Cap. Um, short term rentals, invest in programs that incentivize second homes to be used for long term rentals for locals. Uh, convert existing buildings. I think that we are trying to do all those things. I think there's caps on S T Rs in most of the jurisdictions. Um, I know the city and Placer County are looking at incentivizing second homes to be used for long term rentals. So I, I think those are good comments and I just want to let the public know that those are being worked on. But we need more than that uh, to provide the housing that's needed. And with that, I think I'm done. Um, so thank you. And I'm going to move us on to public comment. I'm going to start in the room and then we're going to go online. Remember, we're going to give each of you three minutes. I'm going to ask that we try not to repeat too much. Um, say, for instance, the speaker before you says the exact same thing that you'd like to say. You can come up and say, I completely agree with what they said and maybe supplement. But let's try to not spend three minutes um, saying the exact same thing. I do want to provide everyone their time though. So. Um, let me make sure I didn't miss anything there in my cheat sheet. Uh, let me just remind everyone to participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov. In the calendar, click on Advisory Planning Commission, November eighth, twenty twenty three. And there you'll find a link to our meeting. Um, please find the raise hand button and zoom or dial star nine on your telephone and you'll be unmuted at the appropriate time. And I'm going to go to the room now. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please come to the podium and say your name.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the time. Stephen Prescott. I uh, I'm one of the owners in the Kings Beach Mountain Town Center. And uh, my, I just had a question for Alyssa. You mentioned uh, higher density. In town centers that have uh, stormwater coverage or stormwater treatment systems. You didn't mention Kings Beach. There's a whole watershed improvement program. Would that count as an intensive stormwater treatment system for the cover- additional coverage?
If it is a certified and uh, area wide that the local jurisdiction recognizes, um, I guess I would defer to Placer County to, to answer that, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, not quite afternoon, or maybe it is. Uh, Ellie Waller. Um, I just want to point out. I think this is bad timing. We're in a financial paradigm shift in the world uh, and down here everywhere. Um. I don't live in Tahoe anymore for lots of reasons. Um, but Tahoe is my backyard. I'm a Douglas County resident. Um, I. You guys had two and a half hours. I am appreciative of some of the thoughtful comments that were made, but we don't get enough time to address. I'll send them to the R P I C. So they're on record. Um, localized impacts are really what we're talking about. Um, I don't believe that. Any of us want to live next door to something that we didn't buy into originally. Yes, we need more affordable housing. The terminology is confusing to everybody, not just you, not just me, to the public at large, what we're trying to accomplish here. It's not about luxury. Uh, again, sometimes there are uh, reasons people don't want to rent. They have an um, unrealistic expectation of what their first home's going to be. So all of this comes into play. Um, the mapping, um, I noticed that you didn't show Glenbrook. As a multifamily area. It's very unlikely some developer is going to want to come in and do Glenbrook, but. Um, just looking at the maps and trying to have people understand where these things can be built. If a developer comes forward, uh, Placer County got ahead of the, the game and they're trying to help keep, and I, I said help for a change. Um, the height down, if it gets approved, we don't know. That's going to be January. I'd like to believe um, Placer. Doesn't come back with another amendment for this increased height. Um, that's a gift. I think this is a gift to the local jurisdictions and I'm um. I think that there's just so many things here. I've got scribbles everywhere. I had prepared notes. Um, probably be better off just writing in. Again, we, we're not addressing the lower income issues. A lot of our workers won't be able to afford this. Um, we call our community nurses, teachers, doctors. We don't call them bartenders, restaurant workers. Um, uh, phase three, the equity. Um, I, I just don't even know where to start after hearing all your comments today. Again, some very thoughtful, the I E C coming out December thirteenth. I'm, uh, why did this meeting not get postponed until the I E C was uh, initial checklist? Um, environmental, initial environmental checklist. We all talk in alphabet soup. We need to get better at it. Also, for the people in the audience and the people online, you need to say your names. You need to say who you're represented. What, who you're representing. A lot of people don't know who you are. Um, and I think it's advantageous in the future at all TRPA meetings, governing board, R P I C communities, any of these committees that, you know. any of these committees that, you know, everybody knows who you're representing, and so they can come to you. And some, most of you are appointed, some are electees. Um, I, I, there's just, again, so many different things that I think I'll, I'll come forward with um, in my next round. Thank you.
Morning, APC committee. Um, my name is Peggy Borland. I've been a resident of South Lake Tahoe since nineteen seventy-two. I think some of TRPA's policy of our past are worth reviewing. For decades, going back to the nineteen seventies, the TRPA allowed only one residential unit to be built on a parcel. No duplexes, triplexes, or apartments were allowed to be built. Any multi-unit construction would have, according to the TRPA, been growth-inducing. New homes were being built, no matter how large. Were only allowed to have two bathrooms, again, because the TRPA considered that to be growth-inducing. Also, in the nineteen seventies, the TRPA's warnings to be severely limiting any building going forward in the basin backfired and set off a building frenzy. Eldorado County, where I worked um as a property appraiser at that time, was issuing twelve hundred fam, uh, family, individual, single-family building permits a year in Tahoe. That happened two years in a row, like nineteen seventy-six and nineteen seventy-seven. A classic example of unintended consequences. Later, during the redevelopment era in the nineteen nineties, mobile home parks and apartment buildings were being torn down to make room for the tourism industry, and none of those workforce-type housings uh were allowed to be replaced. Uh, these TRPA policies may have seemed like a good idea at the time, but they have created more problems than they ultimately solved. Fast forward, and today, using questionable Prosperity Center data, we're told that thousands of residential units are needed for workforce housing. In response, the TRPA is proposing what I would call sweeping policy changes under a deceptive banner of housing and community by revitalization that would promote the urbanization of parts of the Tahoe Basin. The new plan defies the uh environmental protection. For decades, building sprawl was forced on the basin by the TRPA's policy of one lot and only one unit to be put on it, with no option to build multi-units for workforce housing. Now, the TRPA is proposing to fix the problems they created by allowing five-story buildings, higher density, and almost no parking requirements. All this with no environmental impact study. Before new regulations are approved to allow more, more and more development, we need to first revisit the short-term rental issue. There are more than five thousand permitted short-term rentals left in the basin and estimates of hundreds and hundreds more operating illegally. Contrary to what you might think, the vast majority of short-term rentals are what you would call workforce housing, two- and three-bedroom modest homes, not the multi-mansions you hear about. There, um, this is a, a, existing housing that has been allowed to be converted to commercial use lodging. And because we have a housing crisis and not a tourist accommodation crisis, this is where the TRPA needs to turn their focus. Five years ago, the city of South Lake Tahoe, the citizens took it upon themselves to find a remedy to what they were identifying as lack of housing. It took the form of a, a citizens initiative that ended up being called Measure T. That passed, and today there is additional housing in that jurisdiction. And right this minute, as we sit here, residents of Douglas County are out gathering signatures to do the same thing in their jurisdiction. It's time for the TRPA to start doing what the residents have taken the initiative to start the process of. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Anyone else in the room?
I just wanted to say I was at the meeting in Myers, and when I was at that meeting-
Could you please state your name for us?
Linda Witters.
Thank you.
I'm from Eldorado County, and I was at the meeting on October fourth. Um, which at that point I was told that wasn't a public meeting, but it was on the Legisstar. It was on Eldorado County's Legisstar. I saw it there. I showed up. And what was said there, some of that's been left out today. Part of it, it's about that the goals under this proposal include equity and climate change, which isn't even proper English. Um, but uh, nobody talked today about the HIT grant. Like, y'all must know about the HIT grant. You took three hundred and, three and a half million dollars to cause these things that are in this plan, this, these new proposals to happen. Look at it yourself. Uh, and to not mention it, even when on your own website, Julie Reagan is uh quoted as saying, and I paraphrase, that um TRPA has completely screwed up and incentivized luxury development over the years. Like, no kidding. We know that. And then you're gonna come out to Myers, which isn't a walking town. Last year, the, the snow removal on the bike path couldn't be done. We got sixty feet of snow on South Upper Truckee Road. You're not serious, right? When this proposal or something like this came before the Douglas County Commissioners last month at the same time, here's what they said. They said, there's no such thing as no parking. There's not even such a thing as limited parking. You know what there is? There's parking in other people's neighborhoods. And that was vocalized by one of the Myers Advisory Committee member who's, who was there at the meeting on October fourth, and he said he's from Oregon. And when they did this in Oregon, it, the, the effects were not contained in the area which was addressed. The effects went to the neighboring neighborhoods, of course. There's no such thing as no parking. There's only no, there's only parking in other people's neighborhoods, and then you talk about, oh, well, maybe they'll park on the road, and if we have curb and gutter, that'd be okay. Um, snow removal conditions? I mean, I couldn't be any more disjointed in me talking right now than this presentation has been. Talk about not transparent. Talk about not having your ducks in a row before you started this meeting or the process. And then you think that because you've been at farmers markets, that people know? Are you not listening to people saying they have jobs and families? I mean, after the October fourth meeting, I tried to get on TRPA's website and look at the maps. I could not pull up the map of the town centers. Why? And you're saying we're all perfectly um informed, and this is transparent? I disagree. And I think that anybody on this Advisory Planning Council, which by the way, you don't have an ombudsman, and keep looking at the cloth and see if I'm almost done. Um, you don't have an ombudsman, which is the person who represents the public. That position needs to be filled for this committee right here. And if you are a person who needs these, this housing in order to live in Tahoe, then you need to refuse yourself. Whether you're on the governing board or you're on this advisory committee, because that is a conflict of interest. That's just the least of what I could say.
Thanks, Linda.
Oh, I'm John Messina, and I really liked what Linda had to say. But there's the elephant in the room. I live, I moved into a quiet little neighborhood, which you've now designated as a town center. There is now one thousand, over one thousand affordable housing and workforce housing units within a mile of my house. You know how many units are within a mile of the TRA, T, T-PRA building here? Zero. Zero workforce housing, zero affordable housing. This is all what we call nimbyism. Let's build it over there. What are you doing in realistic stuff? You're dumping everybody in our neighborhoods, getting us higher densities, lower value properties. Uh, this is not the way to improve things. If, if you have more people that can live in a city, take some of this land over here and create a new city. Don't squeeze it until the, the quality of life here sucks. Because that's your job is supposed to be to preserve the quality of life in the Tahoe Basin. And just adding more people to it just dilutes the quality of life. Uh, there's so many things that came up in this three-hour meeting. I can't address it in three minutes. But you were talking about setbacks. One of the worst things in this whole area is a twenty-foot setback from the street is not sufficient. Cars are twenty feet long. Then you add a ten-foot uh snowbank for snow removal. Not enough space. On uh Conestoga, they just built a whole roll of duplexes with one parking space per unit. And in the winter, they're shoveling their snow out in the street because they have no place to dump it. I mean, that's, your job is supposed to be making sure people have places to dispose of their snow. And you're not doing it. And you're talking about the quality of life for people who don't live here. You should be worrying about the quality of life for those of us who have lived here for twenty or thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in the room? One more. Okay, and then we'll go online.
Hassan? Hi, I'm Patrick Taylor. I'm with Alpine Corporation. We specialize in developing achievable housing in the Lake Tahoe Basin, both in North Shore and South Shore, in Nevada and California. I'm gonna address some of the questions and comments that I've heard in this meeting by the board members and the public. The most of the changes that I've heard for the new codes are um definitely needed. I think that some of them could go a little further. Um, particularly, what we need around the basin wide is we need a stormwater drain system. And that would take care of this whole coverage issue that we have. If there was a stormwater drain system, then we wouldn't have this problem. Um, now, how do we implement that? That's the real challenge, because that costs money. Um, the next thing, the parking issue is easily done because when you build these buildings, okay, they all should have parking underneath. That's where the height thing comes in. Um, I sat down with my architect on Monday looking at these new code, code amendments on designing a new project. And one of the questions that I heard today was, how many more units can you get with these code changes? With these no, new code changes, we were able to double the number of units. We were able to go from ninety units, um, actually was seventy units to a hundred and forty, I think, a hundred and fifty. So that gives you the answer to that question right there. And what I hear mostly from these comments from the public is there's no solutions. I don't, I haven't heard anybody talk about how are we gonna solve this work, workforce housing issue that we have? We both, we all know it's a huge issue, and um it doesn't help the environment, uh, which, which I've lived here for thirty-five years. I love the lake. I'm an athlete. I do, um, do all the sports that we all love to do, whether it's kayaking, mountain bike riding, hiking, snow skiing. I do all that stuff. So, I mean, I mean, it's crazy to not think that those of us that live here don't wanna take care of the lake. Of course we do. Um, otherwise, why would you live here? You'd go live in the city somewhere. So that's, that's nuts. Um, so the next thing is we're talking about the lenders, okay? I deal with lenders all the time because I have to finance these projects, and they cost an enormous amount of money. So when we're looking at making these code changes, you've really gotta look at, you can't, it's so hard for us to pay for these, and you're talking about the returns. Okay, it's basically, our returns are so small. Lenders just ask me all the time, why are you even doing this? You know, your returns are just minimal. We have no investors in our projects because I couldn't attract an investor because it's tiny. You know, we make less than three percent of our return. So if I wasn't fortunate enough to have my own cash and capital to put in these projects, it wouldn't get done. So we really have to recognize all these facts of how difficult it is to build these achievable housing projects. And the only other way you can do these affordable housing projects is to get this Lytech money to come in like they did for the Sugar Pine Village, which that's very hard to get because the basin's not really qualified to get most of that money. So you have to really look at all of this. These changes are desperately needed. And you, all these changes help address this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any final comments in the room? Okay, seeing none. Let's go online, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, hands are going up. Looks like we have about nine at the moment. The first hand up was Russ Hansen. Russ, if you unmute, you can address the commission. Russ, if you unmute your microphone, you can address the commission. Okay, Russ, we'll circle back to you. Next hand up was Stacy B. Stacy, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Stacy Ballard. I am a thirty-year resident in South Lake Tahoe. Um, I am low income. I fall under extremely low income because I am on social security disability. I was not disabled when I moved to South Lake Tahoe, and just like most people and humans, uh, we will all get sick as we grow old. And so um many of us who are low income need our cars because we cannot rely on public transportation to get us to the places we need. So my biggest issue is that I am now walking down streets. I've walked down for the last thirty years, and I'm seeing ten thousand square foot homes going in that have four- and five-car garages. And yet you all wanna shove us into a smaller place with, with uh, and take away our cars. And so I, I know this has to be done, but I think there has to be a middle ground found as far as uh uh, coverage and uh the heights that you guys are demanding the whole basin uh, uh, you know, follow your rulings on. And um, it, it's not coverage just because of um, uh, you know, we need more parking or whatever. It's, it's coverage cuz we want bears walking through our neighborhoods. A lot of the drawings that you guys show are so deceptive because there's large trees around these huge buildings going in. But that's not realistic. And so um, I, I think the height uh is gonna be a huge problem you're gonna deal with. Um, I, again, I'm low income, and I don't want five-story buildings in here. And, and so I think we have to find some middle ground, so I'm asking um uh that you don't uh decide anything uh today. Uh, I think the public is confused because you guys haven't uh educated the, the community enough. This needs to be done. I think there needs to be more transparency. I'm wondering what input you've gotten from our different city councils um that really care individually about each of our cities and our elected members uh by our community. So I'm wondering what voice they have had in all this. And then um, I, I also agree with what uh John Hitchcock said, so thank you for your time. And, and to build accessibility, be sure to build accessibility into all this, please.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
The next hand raised is Bill Chan. Bill, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Bill Chan, Tahoe Prosperity Center. Uh, I'm commenting to thank TRPA for its efforts to increase workforce housing in the basin and to support the proposed housing amendment package. Uh, there are no perfect solutions to this incredibly complex um, housing challenge in Tahoe. Uh, however, these proposed changes will help increase the supply of the types of housing we need here while preserving the environmental and community characteristics of the basin that we all cherish. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
The next hand raised is Bob Poet. Bob, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi there. Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to say, uh, I agree with Mr. Young uh on the uh mixed-use uh zoning uh ratio. Uh, the sixty percent, it, it might even have to be boosted to something like seventy. On your slide, you show a picture of uh Alpine Coffee, and that's on Highway eighty-nine. I'm familiar with the property. I've been in it. Uh, the upstairs portion is by no means uh fifty percent of the uh total square footage, uh unless you were to say uh that that um upstairs would have access to the kitchen area and the downstairs part, then it might work out. But that's just one example. Uh, I, I, I like that idea, though, of having the mixed use because you can, you can alleviate the problem one at a time. and dispersed over a wide area. So it doesn't really add a lot to the density. And that's one of my main concerns is the density. You know, if we have an emergency such as the evacuation from just a couple of years ago, this, this could be a real problem, especially if people don't have cars, don't have a way out. You know, oh, they'll just take the lake link. No. The lake link right now has four vehicles, four. And that's, and that's actually, it's three. It's down from their summer limit. What, what is, is Uber going to, you know, it's going to be five thousand dollars a passenger if there's an emergency like that. So anyway, take baby steps. Take baby steps, please. And, and you know, because you've been trying, we've been trying, all of us have been, have been trying to solve this problem for, for decades, you know? So it's, it's going to be very difficult to do it one swing, one swing of the bat. But one step at a time is better. I know my time is short. I would also assume that what you're doing is in compliance with fair housing laws. I'm, I'm just presuming you've done your homework there because it is spot zoning. And, but safety. Also, the high density twenty years from now could lead to blight. High density is not good. And it's not good in the forest either. I, I'm running out of time here, I know. But there's an opinion piece in the Tribune of September twenty-seventh. It's by Amy Berry. Talks about trees, density of trees, and how that can, that can ruin a whole forest and it may be doing that. We people might be the same. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Bob.
The next hand raised is Ann Nichols. Ann, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yeah, hello. Ann Nichols in the Tahoe Preservation Alliance. I don't know, to say that these housing amendments are middle ground and I think is a real exaggeration. You know, we developed a table that was much more, I sent it to all of you about all these amendments and how it affects the transition area and so that you'll all have something to refer to. It's a tremendously complicated plan as the whole TRPA code is now. It's some, you know, just complexity nonstop. And, you know, some of the things said today, you know, the larger units won't be built if you do greater density. They're going to build as larger units as they can. I'm a real estate broker here, Nevada and California, fifty-two years. It's just the way the profit motive works. So I think it's very naive to think that they won't build the largest possible units they can. And for achievable, it can be, so if you're a remote worker and you say you work thirty hours a week in the Tahoe Basin and you are, have a business license and you self-report and only ten percent of the achievable housing will be audited. You know, the TRPA is bad at enforcing BMPs. That's why they're saying we're doing this now. So, you know, being the income police, I really doubt that that's going to work. And I wish when, you know, I'm, I'm still confused. We've been reading this for, you know, it's only been out, by the way, for a couple of months. But anyway, so in Carnelian Bay and Lake Forest, I guess that these bonus units can go into those areas. I'd love clarification on that. And as far as parking and a shade study, the Boulder Bay project had a, went from a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet to eight hundred and fifty thousand. They said it reduced traffic. And there's a lot of ice that's going to be built from these seventy-five-foot-high buildings. So, you know, these studies, you do the studies, it always, always works for the project. And then Susan Chandler, if we're saying incorrect stuff, please say what it is that we're saying incorrect. And I just wondered, where are all these, can these bonus units for the, they call it for the rest. There's five hundred and sixty affordable and then there's the rest. Well, where can the rest go? Is that part of the limit for Placer County or Washoe County? Those questions, this is not ready, you guys. Let's spend some more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
The next hand raised is Christina Hill. Christina, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a long-term resident and ex TRPA employee. And I've been a land use planner my whole adult life. And doing applications to the TRPA, if you do a garage addition, you have to make certain findings to show that you're not going to exceed the thresholds. And I'm really disappointed in the TRPA not being able to do those findings. They haven't made any findings. I know there's a section of the staff report in your packet that says, yeah, these findings, they were made in this regional plan update two thousand and twelve or this document. You know, you're citing old outdated documents as having done your homework for you. And I just don't buy it. Why aren't you writing out written, written responses to the findings that have to be made to show that you're going, not going to exceed the environmental thresholds? That is really troubling to me. And on that basis alone, I think you should delay that until you make those findings available to the public. You know, you should have a list of compliance measures and a schedule for each measure that shows how much and at what rate that measure is expected to contribute to the attainment of the affected threshold, et cetera. There's none of that. There are no findings, required findings that you're supposed to make. And, you know, just an environmental, initial environmental checklist. I mean, I've been at TRPA where people have come to the counter and just drawn a line through the no's. No, 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 no. So you're basing the no significant impact on a checklist? That is beyond belief. And also, it says in the staff report that amendments for additional height, which is the heart of the plan, were not analyzed in the regional plan update, leaving the developer to make the scenic resource findings. I mean, if TRPA can't even make these findings, how is the developer supposed to make these findings? I am very flabbergasted at the lack of environmental review that has been done for these proposed monumental changes to the code. Please delay or deny the proposed housing amendments recommendation until you, until proper findings are made and we can see that these changes aren't going to impact the thresholds. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Next hand raised is Helen Neff. Helen, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hello, Helen Neff, Incline Village resident. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Helen.
Thank you. As you consider housing amendments that will forever change Tahoe town centers and areas zone for multifamily, please consider the safety of all residents and visitors. The staff report frequently mentions how the proposed amendments will help reach transportation goals, but does not mention how this will be achieved. During the webinar held on September nineteenth, we were told that development is planned, oh, quote, "development is planned for town centers where walking and biking is an option," unquote. Please take into account the current situation in places like Incline Village. Few residents walk or cycle due to safety concerns. I speak from experience. I was hit and severely injured when legally crossing State Route twenty-eight in a crosswalk in two thousand and twenty-one. Like many small communities located on a state highway built to the design standards that favor high-speed motorized vehicles and commercial traffic, we are not safe or comfortable with walking or biking when accessing twenty-eight, also known as our main street. Let's be realistic. It's a death trap for pedestrians and cyclists. Transit in Incline Village is infrequent, unreliable, and does not connect to Reno or Carson City for key trips like medical appointments. Bus stops are signed stuck in the dirt. Many are not ADA compliant and don't have a bench, much less any shelter from sun or snow. Yet TDD wants to build parking lots and focus their resources on tourist transit rather than initiatives that will help the workforce. How do these housing amendments promote safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users? As an example, TRPA in Washoe County approved nine-four-seven. You were talking about it earlier. It's a forty-four-story, forty-unit luxury condominium development by telling the community that condos costing over two million dollars would create a walkable town center. Approval was given with no regard to the unsafe, unsignalized intersection at the project site. And dot has not repainted the bike lane designations on State Route twenty-eight. The crosswalks after the paving are barely visible. You can't see them at night or in the rain. And how does any of this make walking or biking an option? Housing code amendments should address safety improvements and a crash rate far above the national average on, on our speeding highway, also known as a corridor, in the report. Public transit options need to be provided before parking requirements are relaxed, not afterwards. Land use must also anticipate safe fire evacuation for all residents. It is negligent to adapt housing code changes without first addressing public safety. Please do not pass the buck on safety to other agencies or local jurisdictions. Safety is part of equitable and comprehensive planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
The next hand raised is Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission Committee. Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org, has substantiated my written comments and per the Bi-State Compact, TRPA Regulations and SEQA, the TRPA must prepare a new or supplemental EISEIR to the two thousand and twelve Regional Plan EISEIR before deciding to approve the proposed amendments. Failure to do so represents a prejudicial abuse of discretion on the part of the TRPA. The new or subsequent EIR must address the identification of wildfire evacuation routes and their capacity, safety and viability, and evacuation locations under a range of emergency scenarios in line with California Government Code six-five-three-oh-two-point-one-five A and B. Further, the new EISEIR must discuss significant new important life safety planning information contained in the SEQA two thousand and twenty California Attorney General Guidance Document, Best Practices for Analyzing and Mitigating Wildfire Impacts of Development Projects. Failure to do so represents a prejudicial abuse of discretion on the part of the BRPA. Please read my written documents. And finally, here we go again. We just learned that the Wednesday before the governing board meeting, we're going to get to see a brand-new revised, quote-unquote revised, environmental checklist, initial environmental checklist. Group, why do we keep doing this? You say on one hand, you're concerned about transparency, public trust. And we here today on this very important item, significant item, that you're going to roll out a revised environmental checklist the Wednesday before the governing board meeting. This is really, it's egregious, it's shameful. You know, it's outrageous. Why do you keep doing this? Just to use an initial environmental checklist for this item, which is significant, is egregious, shameful, and outrageous. One of your members finally boldly spoke up. Please let us see that environmental checklist long before it goes to the next committee or commission. And please bring it back to the APC before allowing this to go forward on your parts. What's the hurry? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doug.
The next hand raised is Pamela Sigdinos. Pamela, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yes, thank you very much for your time today. I'd like to really underscore this question of timeline and process and how difficult it has been for the public, those of us who do not understand acronyms, jargon, developer speak, to be able to parse exactly what is being proposed here. I want to really underscore that the fact that there is no ombudsman means the public has no person to contact to really ensure that the public's perceptions as well as issues are being adequately addressed. There's also no dedicated media. And I say this as someone who's a columnist. It is remarkable to me that an agency this large that has this much scope of power has nobody monitoring, tracking, and giving the public a really clear understanding of what's happening. Without this media scrutiny, I believe there have been lots of decisions made that have never had the level of transparency that the public deserves. I'd also like to talk about the timeline in relation to how this is being laid out. The fact that we are not getting all the data upfront, but it's coming close to when the governing board is going to be making a decision. I want to double down on what Doug Flaherty said. We need more than two weeks to review an environmental impact checklist. It really needs to be much more substantive. Frankly, we need a much bigger environmental impact overview by virtue of the fact that in eleven years, much has changed, not only in the basin, not only in the climate, not only in the local populations. We have a very different world today than we did eleven years ago. I'd like to also point out that in two thousand and twenty-two, Stanford University put out a study, published in Nature Magazine about the very real hazards of building in double hazard zones. This is exactly what TRPA is proposing. It sounds like you are creating a potential disaster by virtue of trying to put more building, more construction into a very densely wooded area. Just imagine, we had one lane available to us this summer because of roadwork. If all of this construction goes on and the green light goes, we are going to have some significant problems, not only just going about our daily lives, but getting out of the basin in the event of an emergency. I'd also like to really underscore the importance of going slow. What is the rush? You could do a proof of concept in one area. If it's so wonderful, it will wow everybody and we will understand how this will happen in other parts of the Lake Basin. Please do not do a one-size-fits-all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Next hand raised is Gavin Feiger. Gavin, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hey, good, excuse me. Good afternoon, Chair and APC members and TRPA staff. Thanks for the time today and all the work from staff and thoughtful discussion so far from, from all you commissioners. I know that you all care about the lake and our communities, and we do too. I sit on the Tahoe Living Working Group on behalf of the League. Our concerns have been the same since the start. Coverage and transportation impacts, which directly and indirectly impact Lake Tahoe's natural environment. So we submitted a letter on Monday. It's only about three pages. Please give the glance if you haven't been able to yet. Comments today are, are in more detail and writing there. You know, we, we want to support deed-restricted housing. We see the dire need for local housing, but we also have a dire need to protect our environment. We very much support concentrating the remaining development allowed in Tahoe into town centers. For these amendments, we prefer that they only apply to town centers to start with. It's justified because of the limited scope of the amendments and considering approving them with NIEC, also has a limited scope. And while we don't want to see incentives outside of town centers until we see that they're working and we are getting the type of affordable housing that, that is the goal, we're very opposed to extending the town center boundaries with incentives for the adjacent parcels. We'd much rather see that, or need to see that in phase three with a more detailed environmental review. We've got a lot of opportunity there, but, but it is going to take some more thought. And then moving on to coverage and parking, these are really the big ones for us with these amendments. The two issues are inextricably linked. Coverage may be the strongest protection for the lake in terms of land use development. And cars are bad for the environment and we need to change our car-centric planning. Our recommendations, again, you know, in more detail in our letter. But for the coverage, we need to make sure that these proposed amendments only apply to the current nine hundred and forty-six bonus units and the commercial needed to support those units, the mixed-use definition. What it cannot do, especially through these amendments, especially through the IEC, is condone or be misconstrued to support additional coverage above the base allowable for. or be misconstrued to support additional coverage above the base allowable for any other type of development. It's really only limited to these nine-hundred-and-forty-six units and associated commercial, and that needs to be really clear in the IEC. For parking, you know, fundamentally, we're not willing to accept any additional coverage over the current base allowable if it goes to parking. We need places for people, not for cars. These amendments don't require less parking as proposed, don't require it, but they do allow developers to build less parking for those renters that don't need a parking space. And there are plenty of them out there. It's not for everybody, but there's a lot of people that don't need that parking. Again, more specific recommendations are in comments, but hoping they're asking today that you give direction to staff to make it very clear, these amendments are only for the bonus units. And then for parking, removing as many barriers as possible to achieving the lower parking standards. So thanks for your time today.
Thanks, Gavin.
And we have eight hands remaining up. The next hand raised is Sophia Hydrick. Sophia, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good afternoon, Advisory Planning Commissioners and TRPA staff. My name is Sophia Hydrick, and I am the Advocacy Director for Mountain Area Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Phase Two housing amendments. Mountain Area Preservation is a thirty-six-year-old environmental advocacy nonprofit, and in addition to advocating for open space and smart land use planning in Truckee and North Lake Tahoe, we also advocate for workforce housing. In fact, we have helped to bring over seven hundred workforce housing units to Truckee. So we're not NIMBYs, but we also know the importance of getting it right, because once you take a step in a certain direction, it's really hard to go back. The amendments before you today are deeply concerning, and there's a lot to comment on. I'm going to focus on just a couple of highlights. First, concentrated development outside of town centers is also known as sprawl. Incentivizing sprawl goes against everything the TRPA stands for. The town center boundaries were thoughtfully developed. Let's respect them. Two, the proposed heights, density, and coverage are out of character with much of Lake Tahoe. These amendments have the potential to drastically impact natural resources, scenic vistas, the way that Tahoe looks and feels, and perhaps most importantly, public safety. There may be specific sites that can accommodate the height, density, and coverage that is proposed, but not hundreds of sites across the basin. You say that you're proposing these amendments because a one-size-fits-all approach isn't right for Tahoe. Yet that's what these amendments are, one-size-fits-all in town centers and also outside of town centers now. The TRPA needs to be more thoughtful about this process. I really liked some of the comments that Kevin Drake made. One of our strongest recommendations is that you should conduct a site analysis and actually identify specific parcels across the basin that could accommodate an affordable and workforce housing overlay zone. Let's put large multifamily projects where they make sense, and definitely not outside of town centers. Third, it's imperative that the impacts are thoroughly analyzed through an appropriate environmental review process. The fact that you say that upzoning hundreds of parcels would have a less-than-significant impact on any resources is just mind-blowing. Relying on the analysis from the 2012 EIS analysis from over a decade ago is not appropriate. It's not valid. The conditions in Tahoe and the surrounding region, Carson, Reno, Truckee, they've changed, and that needs to be accounted for. Your documents essentially say that because the overall development capacity in Tahoe isn't changing, the impacts are just kind of shifting from one location to another. And that perspective is flawed because the amendments don't consider a change in land use patterns or more coverage or massing, and they don't guarantee the protection of undeveloped open space. There might be a one-to-one offset in density, but there's not a one-to-one offset in coverage or massing. And then a final point on affordable and workforce housing. Enforcement of deed restrictions is critical. I'd love for you to speak more about how you plan to enforce these deed restrictions, because without enforcement, this simply won't work. We, you know, kind of in summary, we have to do better for the workforce and for Tahoe. Please go back to the drawing board, identify specific sites for these incentives, and complete the required environmental analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
The next hand raised is Rob Olson. Rob, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hello. I think I'm muted. Yeah. I'm Rob Olson, a full-time resident employer for over seventeen years. I'm an architect and a builder. And there are major pitfalls in the current codes that hinder the number of workforce housing units that could be built today. I'm working on my own workforce housing unit in Tahoe City that we aim to get at least sixteen units and hopefully more if this amendment goes through. And, but, you know, these possible updates would only help me, but also other developers that are local and from the outside area to do it. And so I do push for this group to keep moving the ball rolling forward on this. I hope that TRPA and other local jurisdictions will keep pushing and making other incentives possible as well. I think this group did a great job at addressing many of the concerns before the public comment period, but I'd like to highlight some as well. Runoff is being addressed, so I don't think that changes anything to the environment versus the current code. Currently, many of our workforce comes into Tahoe from outside the area where they can find affordable housing. If a good amount of these hard-working folks could live locally and walk or drive a short distance to work, isn't that a win-win for the environment? Seems like a huge net gain for the environment, so I would argue that it does impact the environment, but in a positive manner. Timeline, there's not been misinformation on the amendments. Opponents and proponents have both been at various meetings to date and speaking their mind, pushing this approval down the road because folks don't understand the terms or what really is being proposed is a stall tactic. And we really need these updates. Yes, bad projects can come from these updates, but bad projects come every day. I mean, the current codes don't really change, you know, they don't make projects any better. So what's worse is no action. So inaction can jeopardize this even more. Transportation does need to be better. I agree with many of those notes, and I know that we are working on that collectively. And sure, not everyone will be able to walk to work, but many folks that do live close to work hopefully would walk to work as cars are one of the major expenses for most people in this nation. These updates are not to solve all the housing issues, but address a portion. So let's not muddy the waters by saying no one will ever walk to work. My wife and I walked to work majority of the first two years living here. We did have a car, but we did want to save money and help the environment where we could. Overall, this is not for a specific project. This is generally trying to give ability for developers to make it pencil out. The North Tahoe needs four thousand units, and we're not trying to say all four thousand will go into five town centers or whatever it is. I do appreciate your time and keep moving us forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Next hand raised is Toby Tyler. Toby, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good afternoon. The Sierra Club Tahoe Group objects to the proposal to change TRPA's code of ordinances and requests the APC members vote it down. The Sierra Club fully supports true affordable housing in the Tahoe Basin, but what is being proposed will provide no assurances or enforcement mechanisms that what is built will be truly affordable for the workers of the tourist economy in the basin. The proposal is designed to only encourage/incentivize affordable rather than mandate affordable housing. Consequently, this is a ruse and a giveaway to developers who, through the TRPA sanctioned Tahoe Prosperity Center, have devised this charade to increase development in the basin by masking it to the public as affordable housing, which it is not. The Sierra Club also opposes the use of the initial environmental checklist, IEC, for these proposed changes as they do not come close to adequately evaluating the environmental impacts of these changes, and it will severely impact public safety during an evacuation caused by climate change-induced wildfire risks in the basin. Traffic is already at gridlock levels around the lake much of the year. Humility of impacts have not been evaluated, and the human carrying capacity in the Tahoe Basin is already beyond strained and is at a breaking level, with the lake's nearshore water quality severely impaired with algae and cyanobacteria blooms, microplastic levels in the lake higher than even in the ocean gyres, lead levels in the lake's waters surpassing the EPA-approved limit by more than twenty-five-hundred times, and a trash problem that is now infamous around the world, such that travel guides are warning the public to stay away. This developer giveaway is unjustified, lacks adequate environmental analysis, and increase and increase the already rapid trajectory of lake degradation. In addition, Tahoe, the Tahoe Living Working Group is not complying with SEQA in terms of its phases because the phases are being piecemealed, as was discussed under the IEC process. The TRPA needs to develop, needs to develop and provide to the public a new new or supplemental EISEIR to the 2012 Regional Plan because the proposed amendments will have significant adverse effects that were not considered in the 2012 EISEIR. For instance, the proposal does not provide enough evaluation of the capacity of the existing stormwater facilities to allow these changes in the code and ensure that all stormwater is collected and treated. Leaving the stormwater requirements and snow removal on walkways up to the developer and local jurisdiction is abdicating TRPA's responsibility. Additionally, due to the vast number of changes that have occurred during the last eleven years since the regional plan was updated, the proposal to adopt these amendments with the inadequately justified IEC is a dereliction of TRPA's duty under the Tahoe Compact. Thank you for these, considering these comments.
Thank you, Toby.
The next hand raised is Leah Kaufman. Leah, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Um, can you guys hear me? This is Leah.
Yes, we can, Leah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm babysitting a one-year-old and a five-year-old, so I'm trying to multitask the best I can. Anyways, I was hoping that all of you had the opportunity to read my twelve-page letter. Because in this letter, I have a lot of suggestions and clarifications. I didn't hear a lot of the clarifications today, and partially that could be because of multitasking. But I just wanted to say that I could not agree with Christina Moore. I am a forty-year land use planner in the Tahoe Basin as well. I'm pretty much retired, but I have come out of retirement just because I've listened to my community so much, and they do have a lot of concerns. And I think Kevin did pick up on that, because what he basically said is that there could be impacts to transition areas, multifamily areas that have not been discussed. One of my suggestions is that these people need to be notified. I have a lot of other concerns that were in my letter. Most of them have to do with the environmental, have to do with achievable housing definition, where I actually put another county, Summit County. They have beefed it up to kind of prevent loopholes. And remember, land use planners and attorneys are always looking for loopholes. We do need workforce housing. I don't know if achievable makes it, because workforce, the J1s can only afford about two hundred dollars a week. So that would be eight hundred dollars a month, and these amendments are two thousand four hundred and fifty, based on Karen Fink's presentation, which is very expensive for somebody that's in our service industry to be able to afford. One thing I also want to touch on, and I did talk to TRPA many times about it, is that the exhibits they used to go to the public were thirty-six feet tall and forty-four feet tall. They were not the sixty-five feet, the forty-two feet outside town centers, or the forty, or the fifty-three feet in transition areas. The public never saw those. None of them. They only saw thirty-six feet and forty-four at the summits and on the website even. And that is a concern, because again, there's transparency. I feel that we need to bifurcate out outside town centers. If you look in the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, there's specific language that talks about that area plan and what it should be in concentrating development to preserve open space and SEZ restoration. I would like to see where development right transfers, SEZ restoration, and open space has actually been done. Oh, I think I'm out of time, yes? Please read my letter, twelve pages with a lot of suggestions, and I would appreciate. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Leah. We definitely got your letter, and we did read it. So thank you for that.
The next hand raised is Emily Blackmer. Emily, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Emily.
Hi there, yeah. My name is Emily Blackmer. I am a Tahoe City resident. And I just wanted to express my very strong support for really any measures that we can take to address the housing crisis that we have in the basin. And I actually also wanted to put, not quite a face, but a voice and a story to the people that we're talking about, and we talk about who housing, who additional housing will support, and I am one of those people. And we are already here, the folks in Need and Housing. Some folks are driving in from Reno on a daily basis to work in the schools and shops and local businesses that make up our community, and other folks like me are, you know, living in the basin, but just in conditions that aren't suitable for our needs. And so additional development to support those needs is essential. I'm in my early thirties. I've lived in the Tahoe area my entire life. I'm a public servant. I'm an involved community member. And everyone I know in my cohort is in a similar position and desperately concerned about housing. Even those of us in professional positions have been completely priced out of ever buying a home based on current conditions. And we frequently worry about being kicked out of our rentals. So when we think about the future of this community, we need to think about the people who will make up a community, the people who will have kids to go to the schools, the people who will work in our local businesses and organizations, the people who will work for our local governments, the people who will, you know, fix our cars, the people who will drive the buses, the people who will fill our prescriptions at the pharmacy or sort our mail at the post office. We need those people in order to have a community, and in order to have those people, they need housing. My husband and I live in a four-hundred-square-foot apartment in Tahoe City. That's pretty small for those of you who can't visualize four-hundred square feet. We are fortunate, however, to live in one of the multifamily areas in Tahoe City, and I will say that quality of life in a slightly denser, as these these proposed changes would be, walkable community is extremely high. Quality of life in that slightly denser walkable community is extremely high. We rarely drive to the grocery store, the post office, the CVS. We can take Tarte Connect to access our local trails and open space. So density doesn't ruin a town center, but rather it contributes to making it vibrant, fun, and flourishing while also reducing traffic. My husband and I are thinking about starting a family, but we can't find someplace bigger that is still affordable to us, and that's for two public servants making over a hundred twenty percent of Placer County AMI. So when we're talking about community character and housing and, you know, people coming in, you're actually talking about me and my husband and my future children, and whether or not I can afford to live in this community I call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
The next hand raised is Naomi Osteer. Naomi, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi. Thank you, TRPA staff and commission. Appreciate the discussion so far. I wasn't able to chime in until about eleven o'clock, so I didn't hear the whole presentation, unfortunately. The doctor's appointment in Reno. First comment I had was, I sent in three comments, three separate comments, and I'm reiterating a little bit of that. First one, I wanted to, what came up, why have we not considered doing Phase Three before Phase Two? It seems like incentivizing what the multifamily that exists already and making things a little easier for them in transition zones might be at a smaller scale would be a benefit before considering height and density, which takes a much longer period of time to get through the public process. We already have those areas figured out, and height seems to be the biggest concern. Where do you, when I was in Reno, I was even looking at the housing down there. Where do you see anything more than three stories? Four stories max, not even in Reno. Five stories, sixty-five feet is too high. And I think we can do this within our current codes. I want to reiterate what Sophia of MAPS said. I agree with all her comments, and please make note of that. The renderings, again, that have been presented to the public need to be accurate. They have not been anything more than three and four stories, and they still aren't on the TRPA achievable housing. uh, website webpage. This is a problem when we're trying to be transparent with the public. That needs to be accurate. Um, I have a problem with the achievable. What keeps a purchaser from just being somebody who gets a business license? Uh, and is their own employer for thirty hours a, a week. This is a loophole. I think it can be tightened up. I think there was a suggestion of Summit County. Maybe we should look at that. Um, and I also believe that having five stories changes our whole community character. And, uh, we don't need to be, have ski villages all around the lake. We have plenty of ski villages. They're great, but we don't need them on the lake. We don't want to see them from the lake. Um, I agree with, uh, Emily. Yes, we do want housing. We need housing. Uh, she was a great example. Uh, she says slightly denser. Multifamily. Be able to have kids. No one in the town centers is going to have kids. They can't, you know, they need a yard or they need space. They need to have more access to a two or three bedroom. That's probably not going to work as well in town centers. It was, it would in, uh. So the, uh, figuring out where to have these uh, specific lots, um, to do the multifamily would make sense. I think that's a great suggestion, actually identifying lots around the lake rather than making it a overall zoning.
Now, you can ask to wrap up your comments. Your time has run out.
Okay, sorry. Um, yes, I also do not agree with the environmental checklist, uh, along with Pam, Doug, and Toby and a few others. And I think you should look at Leah Kaufman's suggestions. She has amazing, um, suggestions there for planning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
The next hand raised is Jackson Riallo. Jackson, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you for the time to speak to you guys today. Um, I just wanted to start off by thanking staff and, um, everyone else who's been involved in the actual process of bringing these amendments forward. I know that this has taken an extensive amount of research and time and effort, so, uh, just really want to commend everyone on that. Um, I'll start off by saying that I agree wholeheartedly with Emily, uh, Rob Wilson, and Patrick Taylor's comments that have been made, um, particularly with Emily's comment. That's something that I've tried to bring forward in some of these discussions, these public forums that have uh, taken place around amendments surrounding building affordable housing. You know, a lot, one of the things that's missing a lot of these times from these discussions is the context of who is speaking at these meetings and the, and, and who needs this housing. Uh, you know, a lot of the people, uh, members of our community that would really benefit from these types of amendments are the types of people who are unable to show up to these meetings and they don't have their voices heard. So really happy to see that Emily came, um, agree with all of her comments. Uh, some additional context here is I am a, uh, uh, should have started with this. I apologize, but I'm a resident of South Lake Tahoe. I also work professionally as a land use planning consultant here in the basin. Um, so one thing I wanted to highlight is the fact that, uh, current codes and standards, and I know this is not new, new news to anyone, but just to highlight this, that, you know, current code standards basically incentivize developers to build the type of luxury housing that everyone does not like and is complaining about. So I think that these amendments do are, are really great steps, uh, forward to incentivizing developers to develop the ha- the type of housing that we want to see and that we need in our communities. Um, and then the last thing that I just wanted to highlight here uh, is mainly, mainly more of a suggestion for kind of the phase three of, of this process. One thing that I wanted to note in terms of an equity issue is, you know, a lot of people who would fall into the categories of, of deed restricted housing, whether that be anything from affordable all the way up to achievable are basically stuck in a situation where they would be permanently renting. You know, they're priced out of ever buying a home. Um, I think one of the issues, underlying issues there is the zoning of these parcels. You know, there are a lot of parcels that are zoned multifamily but don't allow for any type of single-family uses, so that kind of two-step subdivision process that you guys were speaking to a little bit earlier. Um, you know, if there are specific areas that deed restricted housing is being built, um, I think it would behoove TRPA to evaluate whether or not they could either include single-family uses, uh, such as condominiums, or create a separate use category for those types of subdivisions that would allow those housing units to be sold, um, as, as an equity component of the, of phase three. So um, thank you again for your time. I know there's a lot to discuss here. Three minutes is just simply not enough. So, um, thanks for listening and, uh, I appreciate all your guys' efforts.
Thank you very much, Jackson.
Next hand raised is Kathy Julian. Kathy, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thanks very much, and wait a second. Thanks very much, and I really, I really was taken by Emily's comments, and I completely agree with her on the objective that workforce housing is, is really needed. I'm a resident of Incline Village and, uh, and so I'm active in housing, in the housing area to help support that happen here. Um. My problem is that, and I fully understand the need to incentivize development for these projects, so I'm not ignorant of that. Um, nine hundred and forty-six units are precious. I'm concerned that the amendment language will not ensure that these units will go to our workers. And there could be absolutely more focus on rental housing because I think the vast majority of our workers need rental housing, and that is very distinct from owner occupied. I suggest a more cautious approach. I'm not saying slow it down or stop it. I'm saying let's see what works before you expand it. And in this context, I would suggest that you drop the changes to non-town centers for now. And also look at amending the other language in the, uh, in the amendments. For some of the suggestions that have been made, uh, for example, adjusting the language to ensure that units are not, do not end up being high-end condos for high-end, uh, high-income residents. The definition of a cheap bulk could benefit from having some sort of income cap. It should still address the missing middle, those professional families here, but it doesn't have to be unlimited. Secondly, adjust the definition to ensure that the occupants are, as, as I think, uh, Niobe, Nioba spoke, that they don't happen to be remote workers who happen to get a tax address in Incline or in the Tahoe area or work for a business license in the Tahoe area. Ensure that they're delivering services and product to the Tahoe area. The devil's in the details in all of this. Most important, under implementation language, Washoe County could abandon the one hundred percent deed restricted requirement in favor of an inclusionary requirement that could allow for developments with only a very small percentage of deed restricted units, as happened with the Tahoe Area Plan Amendment in Special Area One of Incline Village. Related to this, the mixed-use provision is problematic. Mixed use under that Tahoe Area Plan Amendment applied to commercial to lobbies of condos, sales offices, and condo gyms. Again, the devil is in the details. So, and finally, and I know my time is up, you can't rely upon a non-existent deed restriction monitoring and enforcement system. You need to improve that first. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Looks like we have one more comment.
We have one more hand up, and then we need to circle back to Mr. Hanson. Um, the next hand is Rebecca. Uh, Rebecca, if you could unmute and state your full name for the record.
Yes. Hi, my name is Rebecca Bryson, and I've been working on housing issues, I don't know, at least five to six years. I've been on a couple of the committees, was part of Tahoe Home Commission, and worked with T P C on um, a housing work group. And mostly what I want to say, because people have said everything, but I am fully, fully in support of the parking, having no parking minimums. That has come up over and over again as one of the constraints to housing. And I'm glad to see that elevated here. I agree also with the density. And I would strongly encourage smaller units versus larger units. So I think upping the density would get that because, as Jackson and others have said, currently what we're incentivizing is the big mega mansions that people don't want, and I would like to see as much of the future housing allocations go towards small environmentally friendly housing, which I think all of these, um, requirements are getting towards. I also fully su- but support the coverage as long as it's mitigated with the stormwater and I, um. Earlier in the meeting, someone was talking about having the developers contribute maybe to maintenance. I think that's a great idea, something to add if it's not already in there. And if, if height is the big thing holding people up, I, I get that from an environmental perspective, it's better to go up than wide. But if that's something that's going to hold this process up, like I would push for moving forward with the other ones and figuring out some version of height, but I would support it for now, as long as they can show things about shade. But thank you so much for all the time everyone's put in. It's great work. I know it was a lot of effort. And thank you to all the members of the public because even this meeting alone is getting towards four or five hours of our time. So I just want to acknowledge everyone who's been working on it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rebecca.
I'm going to circle back to Mr. Russ Hanson. Russ, if you would like to comment, please unmute. Okay, we had one more hand go up, and that's Alex Sigdenos. Alex, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to add, uh, add my voice to some of the skepticism around this plan. If the objective is is more workforce housing. I think, uh, what's proposed here with dramatic changes to the town centers, uh, an easy way to get there is low-hanging fruit, and if you move forward, I hope you include this, is limiting or capping S T Rs. We have some five thousand S T R units in the basin. I think we have over a thousand here in Incline Village where I'm a resident. Uh, and it just is, uh, it's wrong that somebody who wants to come visit here can look at thousands of options on Airbnb uh, or, uh, one of the other sides. Whereas, uh, young adults and families who live here, uh, may be lucky to find one or two options when it comes to renting a townhouse condo or apartment. Uh, second, uh, we're very skeptical of deed restrictions. My understanding is we have fifty or more deed restricted units in the town center in Incline today. Uh, and those have never been enforced. Uh, and I think that would also apply to, to new buildings or additional dwelling units. Uh, the fear there is, again, these will become, uh, short-term rentals. Uh, and then when we look at the nine-four-seven development that was recently blessed by TRPA, that's forty units that are going in, in the price, uh, at least as advertised, two-point-five to five million dollars. And again, there's no assurance that this won't just become a large, uh, as practical matter, a large short-term rental hotel. So, uh, our fear is that's where we're going to end up with much of this development. And, and I have a final comment to the walkable downtown. I think it's a great thought. I think it's great for San Diego. It's a challenge here in the basin, uh, whereas, you know, we get snow by the foot. Uh, and people will have cars. I mean, I've lived here, had this house for twenty years now. And there's just a lot of goods and services I need that are not here in the basin. So I have to drive to Carson. I have to drive to Reno. And so those cars will be parked somewhere. And, uh, I, I also live close to East Shore Trail, and people will want to avoid the, uh, uh, you know, the parking meters for that trail. They just park, uh, overall in our neighborhood. So I think that's what we're going to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment on this item.
Okay, Catherine, thank you. Thank you all for your comments. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period on this item. And I'm going to go to staff to see if you have responses. We heard obviously a wide array of comments and questions and suggestions. Um, maybe not, obviously, we're not going to address everything. Some of, some of the stuff we are, have definitely already talked about, but are there anything re- you know, big ones, relevant ones, um, issues that we heard multiple times that you want to address?
We have a few that we wanted to address, and there was one that I specifically did want to get, um, APC's input on, so I could bring it up. Um, but so one of the comments, a couple of the comments came up about enforcement of the deed restrictions and also this issue related to, um, that part of the definition of achievable relies on uh, the occupants of the household having a business license or tax address in the Tahoe Truckee region, and there's some concerns around that, that maybe it's too easy to get a business license. And, um, Leah Kaufman in her, um, comments submitted the language from Summit County that they use to kind of tighten down that requirement a little bit, and it requires that, um, if a household is self-employed, which I think is where the kind of issue would potentially show up, they need to demonstrate that um, at least thirty hours of their work, uh, per week, per average, um, is, they're required to be in the region for that. So they would need to show invoices or something like that. And we did not, we specifically did not include that when we brought this forward before, even though it came up, because we feel like we have a lot of people who are like contractors or plumbers or things like that, who they may some years have more work outside of the basin, some years some work inside of the basin, that there's just, those are people that we want to capture instead of exclude. But I did, if APC wants to discuss that, I did want to put that out as something that, um, it'd be interesting to hear from local governments kind of what, who, what workers you really want to make sure we capture and who you're not as concerned about. So that's one issue. And then also just wanted to touch on the enforcement of deed restrictions. We have embarked on a pretty robust enforcement, um, system. This year was the first year that we needed to do it per the requirements in the code, and then also just based on some violations that we saw in Incline Village. We started reaching out to all of the, um, homeowners in Incline Village who have deed restrictions, and that has been successful, actually. Uh, there were several units that were listed for sale for over the amount when we started reaching out to homeowners. Uh, two of those units came off the listings. They were no longer for sale, and another sold for, uh, within the allowable range. So we are enforcing these units and we plan to continue doing those, and we have funding to continue the enforcement.
I just have a few quick clarifications on some of the questions. Um, I want to note that we are not changing any setbacks with this proposal. Setbacks are, uh, dictated by the local jurisdictions, and we're not proposing changes to those. Um, someone asked, what voice did the elected officials and the local jurisdiction staff have in this process? Um, they, you know, we do, we did have quite a bit of input from the Tahoe Living Working Group, as many have noted. There are a lot of local jurisdiction staff in that group, as well as the local government and housing committee, the APC, uh, the R P I C and the governing board. So there was uh, quite a bit of involvement from those, from that group in these processes. Um, someone asked where the bonus units can go. They can go into the bonus unit boundary right now. Um, that encompasses both town centers and the multi, the, the areas that are zoned for multifamily. Um, and then another person asked if Lake Forest and Carnelian Bay are zoned for multifamily, and they currently are. Carnelian Bay is, and uh, portions of Lake Forest is as well.
Great. Thank you both. Mr. Hester, anything to add?
One, one little thing that's not that important. We have deed restricted housing right across the street.
Right, I thought so. Yeah.
Probably given the time and, uh, all that we've been through, it'd probably be most effective if you had any questions of us.
Yeah.
Rather than us going through a lot of more detail again.
I think so too. Steve, you said you had, you'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Steve Bisher, I, I sit here representing the Tahoe Transportation District, but like all of us who may have a specific appointment, we have a much broader range of interests and knowledge, uh, that we bring to the table as members of the Advisory Planning Commission. Before I talk about a couple of my comments, I wanted to ask, uh, Counselor Marshall. So John, I believe the TRPA does have to do code amendments and different things that apply region-wide. Is that, is that accurate?
Uh, generally, but we also have, you know, the ability to, uh, we, we provide zoning to smaller areas, uh, as well. So it doesn't have to be region-wide uh, in terms of like zoning for special areas or.
Okay, great. Right, understood. But some of the comments that we've heard, you know, are one-size-fits-all concerns that, uh, I wanted to maybe drill down a little bit on. So, um, what I learned this morning was, was two basic things. One was that One was that because you have to have an existing registered area-wide storm drain, the areas of the basin where this could apply if it went forward are pretty limited.
That would be for the coverage.
Right.
In, in town centers. So that's, that's just for the coverage, increased coverage incentives.
But coverage does become a big factor.
Yes.
In terms, so.
So it's restricted.
So I, you know, I think people are looking at this applies to broad areas of the basin, even if it's just town centers or if it's a multifamily. The practical reality is that it's pretty limited opportunities that we're talking about, I think.
Currently, yes. I think our, our hope is in the future that more area-wide stormwater treatments will be built.
Right, but those are expensive, and they do take a long time to plan and implement, as Mr. Hitchcock and many of us know.
Having additional stormwater utilities around an outstanding national resource water would be a nice problem to have.
Yes. So, so I think a lot of people are concerned that this is a broad swath of new opportunities for a gift to developers, which I think it's pretty certain that people are not in the affordable housing business to make a huge profit. I think we've heard that repeatedly from folks like Mr. Taylor and others. So it's not that kind of a thing. I, I am concerned about another issue that I learned about this morning, it was, it came into my mind listening to what Mr. Hitchcock said. So the whole issue of, of who goes first, if it's TRPA or it's the local governments, and whether you opt in or opt out. And I know, Mr. Hitchcock is, I don't think this has come up to the city council or city management. So are we creating additional challenges and work for the local governments to try to catch up with where TRPA is going? Which I do support, you know, we have a real housing problem, no question. The one woman who spoke from Tahoe City, very compelling, there's a lot of those stories. But I'm, I'm just concerned about, is TRPA going out and then having local governments need to catch up to do things? And that's something that I'd like to hear a little bit more about.
I don't think so, because what happens is, when these become effective in 60 days after governing board approval, then local governments, if they want, if they agree with these provisions, they don't need to do any. If they want to do something different, then they need to opt out and say, we want, you know, a different mix of criteria here. We're going to get to the same result, but we think we can do that by utilizing inclusionary zoning, plus this, plus that, different tactics or techniques. So there, there is no requirement for the local jurisdictions to physically do some, some plan amendment to have these go into effect.
But if they want to do something different, there would be.
Correct.
Okay, so the process of opting out might be...
We've actually spoken with city manager, assistant city manager, new development services director, and they asked for the option to create their own version. So that's part of the reason it is the way it is.
I'm just, you know, some local governments have more capacity to process things than others, and, you know, it's, it's something that's a concern. If you have staff and you can do something relatively quickly, I, I know the city, for example, is already working on area plan amendments and, and, you know, talking about other things that, that they, they're trying to muster up the capacity to do all these things. So I'm just concerned because the fundamental principle of the regional plan of 2012 was that TRPA would partner with local governments to implement the regional plan. And I just want to make sure we're not unduly burdening some of the local governments that may not have the capacity to, to keep up with their end of the deal, if you will. The, the, I don't recall any time that the APC has received 262 pages of comments, and they weren't all comments, some of them were press releases and some different things. And then we had two more this morning, which I also read. But what that means to me is that we're probably not ready to move forward today. We have some things to address, and I agreed with Mr. Olling before he departed, saying, you know, we'd like to see, I'd like to see the revised IEC come back to us. I'm sitting here thinking about members of the ARPIC Regional Plan Implementation Committee and the Governing Board, and are they going to sit there and think, well, the APC really didn't do their full job. They didn't review some of these things that we're now asking to be, we're, we're being asked to review, and they didn't really have that for review. The other thing that, you know, just because I've been around a few years, anytime you start getting into, and I know we did this with the regional plan update, but anytime you start getting into November and December, and TRPA meetings are moved up, it's a little awkward. And I, I think that there is an issue of credibility of the APC in our part of this process, and I understand people's concerns that they're, they're following, most recently, Placer County, Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments. Then there's the, the Working Group, which has done a fantastic job. Then there's the APC and the ARPIC and the Governing Board, and it's hard to follow. If I didn't just do this full-time, it would be hard to follow. And so I appreciate the public having some struggles with trying to understand where we're going and what we're doing. So I think it would be important for us to, to wait on this, not to stop it, not to slow it down, but to give it a little bit more thought, so that we can make sure that we're holding up our end of the deal in the process as the APC, doing what we need to do before we pass it on to the next level. And, and that would be, you know, my, my principal concern. Again, I, I don't think, other than the regional plan update, that the APC has ever had this amount of written comment, and of course, the testimony that we had today. So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I appreciate all the comments. I, I don't think that we're giving any gift to developers. We need affordable housing. We have to figure out how to get there, and a little bit more time to make sure we're on solid ground would make sense to me. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Other APC member thoughts? Including online, yes, Jason Kuschnicky. We cannot hear you for some reason. Try it again.
How about this?
Yep.
It's working?
Yep.
Okay. Just going along with, with what Steve was talking about, I did have a similar thought with respect to the IEC as well. And so I, I don't know if TRPA wants to respond to that, but I think it would be worthy of discussion.
Okay, and I will note for the record, too, Garth actually passed me a note that said he would like the revised IEC to come back to APC as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm Jason Kuschnicky with the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection.
Yep. Thanks, Jason.
That is something that the APC can recommend if, if that is their direction or choice.
I mean, my personal thought on it is, if, if the changes are really non-substantial, if it's just some context and say, adding reference to the AG's memo on wildfire evacuation, I, I don't feel like I need to see that again for a technical review. I would say if the changes are substantial, the analysis changes, certainly if the conclusions change, yes, I think we should see it.
The conclude, so far, what we have is really responding to comments. So for example, you heard the lead talk about making sure that the analysis did not, was, was not undertaken as any broader than the project before it. So it's not particularly for the water quality analysis, for the additional coverage. And we're making, we were going to make some edits that clarify that it's just for the 964 bonus units, 46, excuse me, bonus units, and so it's really restricted in its, in its conclusion, so it's not to be used to support other additional actions, which would require, in any event, their own environmental analysis. I think we have the, you know, we have a couple, that's, that's on a couple places, and then the reference to the AG's wildfire. Was, was there anything else that we're thinking of adding?
Just any revisions to the policy changes that, at that point, because there have been a few different policy changes since the document was released in early October.
So that would just making sure we have the correct project description.
Including any changes that come out of the feedback that we get from APC and ARPIC as we move forward.
Is that what you mean by polish the revisions?
Yeah, the project description, sorry.
Okay, so if we decide that we want to make changes, obviously you need to reflect those changes in IEC, and that makes sense to me. Okay. Hitch?
How about in response to Leah Kaufman, Kaufman, there's a question about the analysis, particularly like an aesthetics and lighting glare, which says no impact, and it defers to project-level analysis? I mean, couldn't that just be simply expanded, basically to point out that within the, for example, Torres Quarry Plan, there's ready protections in place, and that's what would apply? So expanding that analysis, basically, there's no impact, because you have to implement all these design standards, rather than simply just saying no, and deferring to project-level analysis?
Yeah, those types of revisions were the kinds of things that have, you know, we were planning to incorporate.
Let's see, there's two hands up. How about Ms. Simon and then Mr. Young?
I'd like to associate myself a little bit with Steve's comments, and I'm concerned, as I think I've mentioned at prior meetings, that we are, we seem to be dependent on 2012 data to base decisions that will affect us from years to come. And while the scope of the, the units that we're, or the universe that we're discussing here might be small, the decisions that we make will, will have implications for the basin as a whole. And one thing that really bothers me, and I did raise this as part of the Tahoe Living Working Group, is the transportation and parking issues. We do not have in most areas of the basin reliable transportation. And so one car per unit seems to be a reasonable amount, not zero or 0.75. And I'm not sure that how increased height will result in more achievable or affordable housing. So I think it's a little bit, well, I don't think I can support the amendments as they're presented today.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Mr. Young?
Mr. Chair, Eric Young, Washoe County. I believe I agree with you that I'm not gonna, I don't feel a real urge to see the, a new checklist unless something really remarkable is, comes of it. I don't expect anything to come of it. I think that we've had a very good review and discussion today, and it's time to try something. It's time to get started and keep moving and to try something. And there are no disasters here. If the new checklist turns out to show us something significant, the TRPA as a whole will surely act on that today. I am ready for a motion and ready to move forward on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Kevin?
You know, it came up a couple of times in, in the public comments, and, you know, the elephant in the room is STR, VHR, and how much it's wildly distorted our market. And I do wonder, I mean, I know it's, hasn't been an explicit part of this presentation or, or part of the proposal today, but how much discussion of, of STR reform has there been as part of the housing working group?
We actually had our Local Government Committee of the Governing Board spend two years on it, and they, their direction was to have each local government address it. And there's three criteria, location, enforcement, and I can't remember the other one that we used to do the allocations. And I think, well, that sounds like a nice solution. If you think about it, where those units are and the type of people who need affordable housing, it's not the same thing. It's different locations and it's different types of units. So, but it's, it's been really very thoroughly vetted at the governing board level. I think that, I'm trying to remember if any, if the APC was involved in what came out of that as code amendments, I think you were, but it's been about four or five years.
Yeah, I believe so, as well tying those to the allocation process or scoring. But yeah, it's definitely been pushed down to be a local government issue, and each one is handling it pretty differently.
Yep.
I could add a little bit of data on that. So there's about 5,000 short-term rentals right now, and data from South Lake Tahoe shows that when there are restrictions or bans, that about 10 to 25% of the units convert to long-term local rentals. So that's about, you know, 500 units, or, you know, and, or maybe 900, you know, at the most. That's really not enough to fully address the problem. And also, like, our costs, like, short-term rentals, you know, the, the, one of the reasons our costs are driven up is because we have so much vacant housing as a home, as a whole, like second homes that are vacant is really causing the vast majority of the inequities that we face overall.
Another comment that came up was, what about considering adding a, an income cap to the definition of achievable? Has that come up? Because that really would, I believe, eliminate the concern about any of these deed restricted units, even at the highest end, becoming, quote, high-end or luxury units.
So I would be interested in hearing from other local governments on this. We previously had an income cap on achievable. It had an income cap that was tied to the income needed to afford the median-priced home, and we got a lot of feedback that that income cap just was not very useful. For instance, in Washoe County, it was 540% of AMI, because that's how much it costs to afford, you know, that's the level of income you need to be able to afford the median-priced home in Washoe County. And then in Placer County, we were hearing that it was too low, that even people who are making two professional incomes still could not afford the median-priced home under those caps. So, you know, we looked to other areas like Summit County and Eagle County and Vale, who have just a workforce restriction, not an income restriction, and we, we made that change in April of 2023. So we did take that specific change to the governing board. You know, if it's a big enough issue, we can revisit it, but we have vetted that and brought it forward for consideration already. Well, we brought getting rid of the income cap, and so that was what we decided to do.
We found we might be subsidizing people who, or maybe not millionaires, but getting close.
Gotcha. You know, and when I look at this on the whole, we've got the coverage, parking, the height, and the density, right? These are all four key pieces. The height's the most contentious for obvious reasons. It's the most sensitive to our community. Has there been any analysis on what kind of gains we could see with density, parking improvements, without adjusting the height limits?
Yeah, our pro forma analysis looked at kind of a holistic, like, a holistic set of changes, so we don't, I don't have data on, you know, how much the reduction in cost would be without the height specifically. It would be, you know, the affordability level would be higher, just because you can fit more units in a taller building. Yeah, so I guess, I guess we don't have specific numbers without the height.
Essentially, maybe this will help. Kevin, if you go back to the, John Hester for the record, if you go back to the analysis, what they said was, each one of these things reduces the cost. So if you want to get the same result, which you can, workforce, it's, because they can't push it down to moderate low, with these changes, you're going to have to do subsidies. That just means one of the subsidies would probably have to kick in, like land or building the stormwater, before we would get to the same place we would with the additional height. So it's, it's, it's all tied together.
The city can speak on that. We actually did do a pro forma for affordable housing project, and basically, in order to get it pencil, it was minimum of 65 dwelling units an acre and 65 feet in height. The problem, the, the issue also comes in because of group pitch requirements, we need that additional height. We need that additional height in order to make it work.
Well, we're getting rid of the roof pitch. We're, we're making the, making the pitch shallower, right?
In multifamily areas, yes.
Okay, but not centers?
In, in centers, correct me if I'm wrong, it's dictated by the area plans, but it would, the, we have the step back. Right.
Unless our area plan just references TRPA's chapter 37, is it on height?
Yeah.
So that, okay.
I don't know that any of the area plans in town centers reference chapter 37.
For our plans, they don't. We specifically built into our, our area plan amendments allowing shallower heights for taller buildings.
Okay. I don't think ours does either for the center, but in other areas it does. Okay.
And we still have the scenic findings and all the other things.
Okay. How are we doing here? We're, I mean, I don't have to say, we're at 145. We're all probably using a lot of our mental firepower here. We do have two motions on this item. We've had a lot of discussion. I see, well, Eric, Jason, do you guys have really final thoughts? Eric, I'm not sure if your hand is still up from before. Okay, that's down. Jason, do you have a final thought?
Well, yeah, one of the, I think what multiple folks had brought up was the idea of, you know, the town centers was agreed upon for a reason. Those were town centers and it was touted as like a caught, a potential solution. Could be, you know, a more cautious approach of focusing on the town centers first. Just wondering, you know, I think that that's reasonable worth consideration. I don't know what other APC members feel. That could also support and, you know, the concept of enforcement of deed restrictions, because I know that that was an issue as well.
Okay.
And then my other final thought is, is I would agree with folks who had, who had mentioned, I, I think it is pretty unrealistic potentially for, just to have, you know, relax the parking standards completely. I mean, it is the Tahoe Basin and like the gentleman had mentioned during public comment, people are going to need automobiles to get to services that are off the hill and just to get around generally to doctor's appointments and things like that. So I, I would, I would suggest that, you know, one, one unit or one parking space per unit is probably more realistic for the Tahoe Basin.
Jason, this is Kevin Drake, maybe to provide a different point of view on that. I think the idea is we're sort of decoupling parking from the building itself and letting the market, the developer, decide what they want to provide. That would allow some of these units to be even less expensive for people who don't own cars. And then those who do and value that, they can choose to, to rent a unit that has a parking spot with it, pay a little more for it. But I think there are, while they may be the minority, there are quite a few low-income people who do not own cars and would love to have a more affordable unit and not be paying for somebody else's parking space. To me, that's the bigger piece of this equation. And I strongly support the parking reforms. If we do one thing today, I want to see that pass. But, but I'll also say California's, S, or what is it, SB, AB 2907 pretty much laid the foundation for us to make some potentially small improvements in our transportation systems around our town centers and achieve that without even having to update our code. That's the California minimum parking requirement. Kind of the law that abolished minimum parking requirements in California almost two years ago, that we do not qualify for in Tahoe because we don't have 15-minute headways on our transit systems. And while I don't think that's realistic basin-wide, it's seriously worth considering what it would take to get there for state, getting from state line to the Y in South Shore, or getting from Tahoe City, Chrisavay in North Shore.
Yep. Good perspective. Ms. Chandler?
Oh, yeah, I guess I'm just not comfortable with going ahead and approving all of these at this point. It almost seems like it would have made more sense to go through each chapter individually because, you know, it's, it's too much of a bundle for us to go forward. And I really agree with what Steve Tashara said, that we really maybe need to think a little bit more about this. Look at the IEC and, you know, we've been talking about this for so long. I really don't see the issue of putting it off for one or two more months to really make sure that we're proceeding in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
I think it, it's bundled, correct? Because we have these, you know, these things work together, like we've been saying, right? Height, density, coverage, parking, these all, it's a, it's, it has to work together. And so that's why I think we see, you know, the motion's complicated. We have a lot of chapter numbers in there, so maybe that's intimidating. But to me, you know, I think I am comfortable moving forward. I don't know if we can make some kind of a motion in addition that talks about if the IEC is substantially changed, that it comes back to, to the APC, I would, I would propose that. To me, to me, I'm just wondering if we, if we delay, what, what will change? How, how would the proposal come back different? Yes, we can take more public comment and feedback, and that's always welcomed. I think we have done a really good job at that. And to me, these amendments are very narrow and targeted and focused. And the fact that these 946 units are already ready to be used in basically the same areas. I understand height is a big issue and I think locals need to take that on and change that if, if that's a local issue. So. Emily, I see your hand is up and then I think we should see how these motions shake out today. Emily?
Yes, I was just going to say I'm ready to move forward for approving the entire package. If the group would prefer to move on just the town center and parking amendments, we could do that too. I just want to point out that it is, I fully agree, these are very targeted. They don't apply to a blanket statement or a blanket area of zone districts or parcels. And they still have to meet scenic standards. And we'll still have to do Placer County environmental review. So I think there's, and each project has to do its own, and its own review or entitlement as it comes forward. So I think there are many steps before major change actually happens.
Thanks, Emily.
Mr. Chair, Eric Young, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Young, go ahead.
Wait, hold on, before Eric goes. So.
One second, Eric.
Take your time.
So if somebody wanted to propose a motion that was a little bit more narrow in scope than the whole package, I could, I could be okay with that. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, Placer County, I thought, did a pretty good job in responding to all the public comments they got on the Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments. They actually put together a really detailed, comprehensive response to comments, which I, I'm sure not everybody, you know, believed everything that was said, but it was really well done. And it was in the English language. It wasn't necessarily an IEC kind of, you know, not everybody can read IECs. So, you know, this is be something I think the staff should consider doing, whether it how, happens today or soon, because I think this is really helpful for people in the public to be able to say, okay, I can't read the IEC necessarily, I don't understand it, but I can read here. And they talked about all the key topics. It was attachment M to the Board of Supervisors packet on, on October 31st. So I think that would go a long way to helping some of the people who made comments today that weren't necessarily just posed to anything, but they want to know how have we addressed comments that they have made? So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, would anyone care to, either, we have a motion on the screen, actually, we have two motions on the screen that we've been asked to make. Yes, Eric?
Being in favor of the motions as, as, as they have been proposed, I would make a motion to recommend approval of the required findings as found in attachment A, including the finding of no significant effect for the adoption of amendments to the Code of Ordinances, chapters 1, 13, 36, 37, 31, 30, 34, 52, and 90, and changes to the goals and policies, land use and housing sections, that would only apply to projects applying for deed restricted bonus units.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ellery. Any questions on the motion? Okay, Tracy, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Ms. Marulis O'Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Drake?
Aye.
Mr. Kuchnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Setza?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
No.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Aye.
Ms. Stala?
Aye.
Mr. Tashara?
Uh, no, and I want to qualify that by saying that I believe we should do a little bit more work on responding to the public comments. So that's the only reason I'm voting no. It's on that limited thing and I want that to be reflected when you go forward to ARPEC and the governing board. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone care to make the second motion?
Mr. Chair, Young, Washoe County.
Thank you, Eric.
Of the motion as proposed, I would move to recommend approval and adoption of ordinance 2023 dash to be inserted, it's found in attachment C. Amending ordinance 87-9 has amended for the adoption of amendments to the TRPA Code of Ordinances, chapters 1, 13, 36, 37, 31, 30, 34, 52, and 90, and changes to the goals and policies, land use and housing sections, that would only apply to projects applying for deed restricted bonus units to the TRPA Governing Board.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ellery. Any questions on the motion? Okay, Tracy, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Tashara?
No, for the same reason as before. Thank you.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Aye.
Ms. Stala?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
No.
Ms. Setza?
Aye.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Mr. Drake?
Aye.
Mr. Kuchnicki?
Aye.
Ms. Marulis O'Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Chandler?
Aye.
And Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, that motion also passes.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Can I propose an additional motion about the IEC, something like, I recommend if the initial environmental checklist is substantially, and I know that word can mean a lot of things, and maybe Mr. Marshall can give me a better word, amended before the amendments proceed to ARPEC, that it return to the Advisory Planning Commission for review and approval, or review and recommendation.
Yes, you may.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Any questions on that motion? Tracy, could we do a roll call vote on that one, please?
Ms. Marulis O'Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Drake?
Aye.
Mr. Kuchnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
Ms. Setza?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Judy?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Aye.
Ms. Stala?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Tashara?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, everyone, take a deep breath and we, we probably need to stand up and do some jumping jacks or something. But thank you all for your engagement on that, that item. Thanks, Alyssa, Karen. Good luck going to ARPEC. We all look forward to see how this shakes out to members of the public. Thank you. We encourage your continued participation, engagement at ARPEC and Governing Board and into the future. It is very helpful. Thanks, Jason. See ya. I think we still have a quorum. Are we okay on that? With Jason departing? We're counting. 11, we're still okay. All right. Thank you both. Ken, I hate to do this to you, but I am going to recommend that we postpone Agenda Item 6, which is a presentation on our US Census data until our next meeting. Is that okay? Okay. Otherwise, people may start keeling over.
Yes.
So thank you for sitting with us, Ken. Sorry about that. Yeah, we're all anxious to see it. Okay, let's try to hurry through the rest of our agenda and we'll finish up here. So onto Item 7, Reports. Pass this to Mr. Hester for the Executive Director Report, including Tahoe in Brief, Governing Board Monthly Report. This is found on page 131 of your packets.
Four quick things, Mr. Chair, as you requested, what has happened on your previous recommendations? Threshold standards, as you discussed, were referred, being referred to the TUI SWIG, threshold updates during Working Group, the APC leads, the Vice Chair leads. And I, tentatively, I think that meeting is going to be the 19th of December. Your next meeting, December 13th. You should have another exciting one like this with the Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments from Placer County. So you see some of the same folks.
Maybe we should put Ken first, so he doesn't get delayed again.
I would support that because I think there's information in there that bears upon the subject that will come after. I was almost going to recommend we do Ken first today for that same reason, but, because I've seen the presentation and everybody should see it.
I'm sure Ken won't object, nor will we if that's your direction. Okay, we can do that. And then just coming in the spring, mixed use amendments, climate smart amendments, area plans. We know South Lake Tahoe, Douglas, Washoe, we're all considering some. And we're trying to get into our twice annual cycle. So we may have others, but that's what we have coming up and you should be getting an invitation to a holiday party in the near future.
Excellent. Look forward to that.
Can I just ask a timing question? So what, what day next month is the Governing Board meeting?
13th? I'm sorry. No, it would be.
20th?
December 13th.
December 13th.
So that would mean the APC would have to be earlier, yes?
What's the, I'll just, where are the dates?
Usually the APC would go a week earlier, so we would be the 6th.
The 6th, correct, correct. Sorry.
Is that what we're scheduled for? Okay.
Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. You're right.
December 6th, okay.
December 6th is the Tahoe Basin Area Plan.
Yeah, we're scheduled for the 6th.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Good catch.
Thank you for that. And that's it?
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Mr. Marshall, General Counsel Status Report.
Two really quick items. We got a positive recommendation out of the magistrate overhearing the Miller versus TRPA case, which challenged the ski-run cell tower. The, but this was a very limited case to the increased depth of excavation required by a different type of foundation. And so the court recommended to the district court that TRPA prevail against all the claims of. And so the court recommended to the district court that TRPA prevail against all the claims of Mr. Miller. If you want more details, I can give those to you and provide you with the reporting recommendation if you so want. And actually, then I think I'll just stop there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, John, I don't know if you can answer the question or not, but my understanding is that the Measure T case is not completely at an end. Is that correct?
Correct. I believe that the city has petitioned the state, California State Supreme Court. To take up the issue that they lost on, which was.
Qualified vacation home rentals.
Right, so the inequitable treatment of people who live here versus people who have homes there that can't do what locals can do.
Correct.
My understanding is the Supreme Court denied that petition on October eleventh. Is that correct?
I'll have to check with the city attorney.
Hear no evil, see no evil, right, John?
We'll report back on that next month.
Yeah.
Thanks, John. I understand we lost our quorum as well, just for the record, so we don't have any more decisions to be made, but we can continue. We're not in a meeting anymore. Let's go to public interest comment. Actually, let me just ask, sorry, let me ask my APC members, any. And I'm just going to ask for a show of hands and not even call on everyone. Any relevant updates from APC members that they would like to share?
Just one.
Mr. Hitchcock?
City Council, I have the first reading of the city's inclusion housing ordinance on. And second reading scheduled for December.
Very nice. Good. None in the room? Any online updates? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move us to Item Eight, Public Interest Comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone. And you'll be called on by a TRPA staff member. Please note, the Advisory Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking action on or discussing issues raised by the public not listed on our agenda. No public comment in the room. Catherine, any public comment online?
Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. We'll close that public comment, and I'm going to move us to our last item, which is adjournment. Do I have an emotion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all. We stand adjourned at two oh seven, and thank you all for a very. Thought provoking thorough meeting. Have a good rest of the day.
You too, thanks.